Okay, seeing that most folks are settling down, it is seven o'clock. We have just exited Executive Session and are now in Open Session. We'll start where we do with every agenda with Citizens Concerns. So if there's anybody who would like to speak to an item that is not otherwise on our agenda, please approach the microphone. And if you could just turn it on and say your name and street.
Hi. I'll be very brief, believe me. Greg Hutchins, Parker Street. I was here last month talking about the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. And I may have left the impression mistakenly that Shuan Kang was the only person on the VCC who had a clue what he was doing. And I apologize for that misimpression. The other members of the VCC have contributed greatly to our work. And that's it. So thank you very much. Enjoy your meeting. I have another one to go to.
Okay. Thank you for the makeover, Greg. And we all know, and well, all of us on the Board know, and appreciate all of the members on the VCC, including yourself, for all of the knowledge you have and work you do. So, thank you. I'll just anecdotally say, I've heard from all of the committees that I'm a liaison to that were asked to do the video. We're very excited about it and thought it was a wonderful idea. So if you could pass it on, if you guys are meeting tonight? Oh, great, excellent. Well, thank you. Okay, yes, if you could say your name and street?
Andan Thai, 126 Parker Street. So I've lived here for eighteen years. So maybe I've mistaken, but I've asked, I believe. Yeah. Or somebody. And then I asked that I wanted to talk to one of you or all of you about some personal issues with other town residents. So should I make an appointment? Because I didn't expect...
Yeah, so this is a public meeting of the Board of Selectmen. So if you want to speak to people privately, if you send an email with your issues either to Lisa or send them to the Board of Selectmen email shell, I can respond and direct you in the right way.
It would only be, if I write an email to all of you, it would only be asking about logistics of when to meet the all of you?
Well, you can't meet all of us in private. Anytime there's more than three of us, it's a public meeting.
Okay, well, I just give you a short heads up. It's been going on for a while now. I cannot prove it. And I've talked to the police extensively. But 2014 to 2018 now, there's been breaking and entrings. And I just wanted to ask, to talk to you more about that. And also to ask, beyond the police detective, if I could get... I just need a fingerprint to...
Okay, so that's probably a private matter that's better dealt if you email...
Is that kind of stuff?
Yeah. So if you email less and it's probably better, we can probably set up a meeting with the town manager or the police chief or the chair, me being the chair of the board.
Or...
Or Mark.
Yeah. I didn't know there was an assistant.
Yep, he's the assistant town manager.
Could you kindly...
I think I have my call.
...write down all of your emails so I can email all of you? Is that it?
Of course, I don't have any of my cards on me tonight.
Or Mr. Berry? Can I just have your email?
So if you just go on the town's website and look up the Board of Selectmen, our email is on there and will only go to us?
I'm currently internet challenged.
Okay.
So sorry.
Mark will write it down for you. Can you just write down the shell?
Like, if I...
Yep, so he'll take that, okay.
So that kind of stuff should be...
Yes, yeah, that's better dealt with there. Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir.
Nijan Data, Went Cliff Drive. We are a private drive with eleven houses and the Acton Water District. And for several decades now, we've had to petition the town for snow plowing services because we had also restrictive covenants over and above town rules. They have expired early this year. So now we are private only in name, basically. We tried many years ago to become a public road, but I think because of the width and the grading, I don't think it's possible. But now, we are just like any other road. And I'm here to see if... I've already given Corey York heads up because I used to petition through him and you used to approve in November every year. So if... Because now, we don't have any restrictive covenants and we're just like a public road, like anybody else except it says private, that our town taxes should receive snow plowing services just like any other town resident. And so I don't know if there's a process. In addition to Citizens Concerns, I went to the town manager's office and I was told that in addition to speaking here, I should send an email to Corey. I've given him a heads up that I'm going to be here. So I don't know what the next... Normally, I petition in September and you guys approve it in November.
Sure.
And so...
I think maybe do that so you're covered for this year, just in case. But also email Corey and you can see, see the town manager.
So I've already emailed him, so I don't know what the next... And I'm here now, so, and you know...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know those particular rules violations off the top of my head, so I'm not going to be able to respond to that tonight.
Okay.
But, you know, we will certainly follow up with your email. So if Corey has it, if you want to forward it to the Board of Selectmen, we can make sure it's followed through on. But we will certainly, unless you know more tonight, Mr. Manager.
Hi, I'm John Mangiari. If you could provide a little more information about how your street is no longer private, I think generally it's private until it's accepted as a public street.
It is private and, you know, it's not... Whoever built it in 1981, they made it narrow and kind of steep. And so we have eleven houses there. And of course, they had, because it was their property, they had covenants. So we... So it was restrictive over and above town rules. So that limit has expired now. And so now, it's private only because it says it's private. I mean, there's nothing private about it anymore. There are no covenants in force. All the rules we obey are town rules. Previously, you could only build as part of town rules plus our covenants. But now, it's only town rules that apply. So in that sense, every year, we pay thousands of dollars to the town to snow plow it, which now seems unfair. At least there, there was a plausible reason that we had covenants in force. So there was a plausible reason why we had to pay extra. But now, we are no different from any other resident here. So... And because we start the process in September every year.
Sure. We're not going to be able to determine tonight whether or not we can legally do that. So if you've sent the email, if you'd like to forward it, you can forward it to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And we'll make sure it's followed through on. But it's going to be more than a night and probably more than a week process.
That's fine, and I'm happy to come as many times as you want to explain if you need any more information.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you'll need to come before this board or if it'll be another process to consider it, but we won't be able to resolve it tonight.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Terrifedix, West Acton. I have a couple of questions. Oh, an announcement. People interested in water, there's a water workshop at Town Hall on Saturday morning. I think it's eight to noon. And I have a question about Woodbury Lane. So on the... This is a question from somebody else, but on the Selectmen's Goals, it says cleanup Woodbury.
Selectmen's Goals are an agenda item, so you can talk about it on the agenda item.
And then the Kelly's Corner zoning, rezoning, do we have any idea whether that's going to be on the December 4th town meeting or is that...
No, there's no plans for that.
No plans for that? And my last question's about the Kmart appraisal. And I'd like to know, it's my understanding that the Board of Selectmen have no plans to promote buying of these parcels. And so I noticed that it was on the Executive Session Agenda Item, and then I couldn't get the copy, or at least I didn't get emails back. And John Avery said I had to get it from town staff, the appraisal. So if you're not proceeding on buying the property, then why would it be shielded under Executive Session?
Sure, I'm going to let the manager address that.
Thank you. Real estate appraisals acquired by the town are generally confidential and Executive Session material until the matter's been resolved. It was discussed tonight. There are some follow-up questions. And whether or not it'll be released will be discussed at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. So has the property owner gotten the copy of the appraisal?
That's also a matter that we discuss in Executive Session.
Okay, so if the property owner has gotten it, I believe that that would then eliminate any chance of releasing the information to the public of impacting such negotiations. So I believe under state law...
The property owner currently does not have the appraisal.
Does not have it, okay, thank you.
So it is still a private matter. Yes, any other citizens' concerns?
I hate talking. Fran Arsenal, 7 Mohican Road. And I'm speaking on behalf of the HTC. And it's regarding our September 13th letter regarding the 40B proposed at 4 Piper or Piper Lane, the Piper Lane condominiums. And we're asking the BOS to, I guess, request to extend the review period.
So I will make you go into the whole thing. We have requested an extension, and I believe we're going to discuss it either at our second meeting in October or our November meeting.
Excellent.
So, yes.
And can we have a copy of the application sent to us or...
I don't know where it is right now, probably. I'm not sure if it's on DocuShare yet, but we can look into that for sure. I mean, it will be available so people can provide comments to us.
Great.
But, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Okay, any other citizens' concerns? All right. If not, we do have a hearing at 7:10, so I will do that quickly before our chairman's update and operational update. So the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on September 17th, 2018, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of CrossFit Gym, 930 Main Street, Acton, for the use special permit 07-33-28-469, required intersection 3515, commercial recreation of the Acton zoning bylaw. The application and company plans can be inspected at the Planning Department and Town Hall during normal business hours. So is there anybody here present from CrossFit Gym? Yes, okay. Do you want to just come up to the microphone and speak to your application?
Well, thank you so much for seeing me, I guess. My name's Robbie Blanchard, and I'm the owner of CrossFit Reach. And I wanted to apply for the special permit. And the reason why is because I didn't know that I needed to have a special permit. We've been operating for about four years now in that particular facility. Two years prior to that, I've been in the town of Acton since about 2011 in one way, shape, or form. You know, over the past six or seven years, we've been working with everyone in the community in terms of helping them get in shape, lose weight. We've impacted a ton of people's lives, helped them get off medication, diabetes, lose weight, just improved people's lives overall. So that's the reason why I want to have the special permit, is to continue doing that and just help as many people as possible. I know a lot of people who work for the town actually attend my gym, several members, people in my community as well. So I'm just here to make that happen.
Great, okay, thank you. Any questions from members of the Board? Peter?
I don't know, is the Engineering Department waiting on this? Or if we issue a special permit, we'll need a decision by, not engineering, I guess, planning, that it meets all the standards required for a special permit. I mean, we have no memo here from planning. I don't know if they have an opinion on this or... It sounds like you just opened your business without applying for a special permit, and so it's just been going on. Somebody in the town brought this to your attention, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm assuming the Planning Department has no objections to it, but I don't know.
That information, we'd have to provide to you after this meeting.
I don't, yeah, I mean, I haven't heard anything. It's a use permit, which is typically not as strenuous as a building or site plan permit. So... Any other questions from Board members? Okay, any questions from members of the audience? All right, then do I have a motion?
Move to approve...
Sure, so can you come up and speak to the microphone? And if you could just state your name and street, please?
Hi, my name is Kevin Daigle, 929 Main Street. I'm here on behalf of my mother, Nancy Daigle, who currently resides at that residence. I had sent an email to the Board earlier this afternoon regarding the CrossFit Gym and the nuisance that it presents to the neighborhood. For the past four-plus years, as Mr. Blanchard mentioned, we have had significant base from the hours of operation, 5:30 in the morning until 8:00 PM at night. It's a constant cadence of just thumping that reverberates through our residents right across the street. We've requested that Mr. Blanchard turned down the music several times, and it kind of comes and goes depending on... I'm assuming that Mr. Blanchard isn't in the gym 24 hours a day and can't control the volume at all times. So that is why I have requested via email a certain condition or limitation on the permit that would allow us to better gauge the extent of his ability to control the noise within the neighborhood and the community. And hopefully, reach a resolution. Because, I mean, I think that the CrossFit Gym is great for the community, obviously, as you've been mentioned. However, there are families, elderly people, young children that live in the near proximity to the gym, and it has been an issue for us for the past several years.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't see that email come through. So I'm not sure if we didn't receive it or either that or it went to my spam. Oh, Robert, maybe it went to planning?
It came at 5:59 today.
Oh, okay.
I have copies if you guys want to read it.
Ah, okay.
Up to you guys.
Yeah, why don't... Yeah, I think it might have come to planning because I didn't see it in here even in my email now. Yes, I will respond.
Yeah, so a couple things. Kevin's also a former member of the gym as well. But the noise, yeah, we have classes, it's really 5:30 in the morning. We have a 6:30, 7:30, 9:30 during our workouts, which consists anywhere from five minutes to 15 minutes for the actual workout itself. That's when the music is on. I'd also like to point out that we are also by the Shoba Valley Gun Club, so there are always constant gunshots going, which makes you run faster. But there's also, you know, industrial trucks, everything like that. So we're also... There's noise everywhere.
Sure, okay, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments from Board members regarding that? John?
Just a question, sir. Robbie?
Yep.
I did drive through your development the other day, and you are set back considerably from the road.
We are, yes.
But I take it Mrs. Daigle lives on the other side of Main Street. So that must be pretty loud, given how far you're set back from the road for her to hear it.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, she's... I mean, their house is directly where the driveway is, so there's no trees blocking...
On the other side of the street.
On the other side, yeah. We also have other members that live directly behind them. I don't remember the name of the street, but we've never had an issue in terms of noise complaints or things like that.
But there has been a complaint, I've concerned, for several years. And can you moderate what you think?
Yeah, I'll elaborate on that. I know that, you know, Kevin had emailed me prior. Not once have they come in to me in person and talked about it, which I'm more than happy to talk to them in person if that was the case. But, yeah, and then we also had turned down the bass. You know, sure, we have the music loud.
I'm sorry?
I said, we had turned down the bass. I mean, there still is loud music when we're working out. But that's, yeah.
But you can turn it down?
We can turn it down, yeah.
And still satisfy your clientele?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay. Could you work on that?
We could work on that, sure.
Thank you.
So questions or comments from Board members? You know, it's a hard one because we definitely are balancing different needs, you know, and it's very hard when there's residential near commercial as well, and you run into these sort of conflicts. So, you know, I'm not sure what kind of... We don't have a noise bylaw in town, so I'm not sure what kind of condition we could even put on this permit. But I would just say if we could work, you know, together on this. And if there are noise complaints, you can always also go to the police. We encourage people to go to the owner first, you know, but you can certainly go to the police as well. But if you'd like to make another comment, sure.
So I was reading the bylaws this afternoon in preparation for tonight.
You're writing more questions on them than I am.
And for the use special permit, there are particular, very specific items that are mentioned, meaning that the use of the land will be for something other than what it was originally designed for. The building in question is an old warehouse. It is meant to store materials, keep them dry out of the elements. It is not insulated to the point where a nightclub could function within it and not cause a disturbance to those in the surrounding area. So I'm open to, obviously, working with Mr. Blanchard about finding a solution. I propose some sort of insulation be installed. However, there is also a garage door at the end that essentially amplifies, and I'm not going to get into acoustics and the science behind it, but if you put your cellphone in a cup and play music, it's obviously louder. So just the dynamic of the building and the way it's set up amplifies the noise, and it shoots it directly at our residents. And I know that other... Some of our neighbors have also said the same thing, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I think only one of us at this table probably knows the cellphone in a cup trick, but, yes.
Terrifedix, West Acton. I was going to point out that there's a state law on noise, and it's now considered a health issue. So it's under the agencies that manage or regulate health. So you might look into that because I think it's seven o'clock or whatever it is. And it has measurable standards by which you can get a measurement device or hire somebody to do that. But I was going to speak relative to what he was saying about the use special permit, is that you can put other conditions in that wouldn't normally have to be enabled by state law or some kind of legal right that's already on the books. And so I believe a special permit to approve it, you've got to ensure that it's not injurious to the neighborhood. So I am hoping that you can satisfy these big folks with something that's concrete and measurable. I like the installation device idea, but also perhaps like a volume measure. Thank you. And timing, thanks.
Peter?
Yeah, it's a tough issue. We clearly don't want to shut down a valuable business in town. On the other hand, if it's a nuisance to the neighborhood, we should try to deal with that. I think, without having the zoning bylaw in front of me, even for a use permit similar to a site plan special permit, we have to make specific findings. It's not detrimental to the neighborhood. It's, you know, consistent with whatever. So I would propose, we put this off, allow them to keep operating, and let planning look at it and come back to us with some conditions or recommendations about how we can mediate the conflicts here.
I would certainly support that. You know, the... Where this development is, it's a bunch of fitness, recreation, businesses, shops. But I think it was probably an old warehouse development, is that the idea?
Yeah, it's the old Acton Deck House location. That's where they were manufacturing and built houses.
But I would support, Peter, that we... Prejudice suggested that we just defer on the use special permit. And I would like to see a condition built in that the noise level be brought down and, you know, not just open for discussion, but that there's a firm requirement that you address it one way or another. Not to slow your business down, but I think what you do is very good.
So then I think we need a motion to continue... Thank you. Blinking on that word. The hearing to a date and time certain. So Lisa, do we have anything on October 1st or the 15th? And do you know sort of either of those dates or ones that you were able to make?
October 1st to the 15th, is that what I...
Both Mondays.
Both Mondays. Probably the 15th, okay.
Do we have a time on the 15th we could do? I know. Sorry, I know, we weren't anticipating that. Do we have any other comments from Selectmen in the meantime, or are people generally... Let's just see if people had any other comments in the meantime, but...
No, I would just suggest you work with planning and the neighborhood and meet with each other and see if, you know, you can come to an agreement that satisfies both your interests.
Yeah, at the end of the day, I just want to keep helping people out, and that's why I got into business, so...
Sorry. You want to say 7:15 and we can change it if we have... No. It looks bad on the 15th? How about November 5th?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. Is it a Monday?
Yeah, they're all Mondays.
Mondays, okay. Yeah, it should be fine. I'll make it work.
Okay. All right, so let's do November 5th at...
Right after the other one.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So 7... 20, okay. All right, so can I have a motion to continue the hearing to November 5th at 7:20?
So moved?
Okay, any other comments or questions from Board members? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, well, thank you and thank you for coming tonight. And I'll make sure we see your email tonight. Yes?
I was just gonna... I didn't want to leave anybody the impression that I don't like what they're doing. I'm totally supportive. I just am very sensitive to the noise issue myself. They do this... They use natural movements to help people get fit, like CrossFit. And so I'm totally supportive of that. And thank you, Peter, it was a wonderful solution. I like it very much. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we are now behind on our 7:20 hearing, so I will read the notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in the Acton Town Hall on September 17th, 2018, at 7:20 PM on the application of Yang and Zhang Inc. doing business as Beijing, Tokyo, change in manager, manager, Zhang Yang, manager for an all alcohol license as a common victor at 103 Nagag Park, Acton. Is there anybody here for that tonight? Okay, great. Wonderful. So if you could just introduce yourself and the request, please?
Sure. Can you all hear me? Do I need to bend this down?
No, I think you're good.
Okay, so very sensitive here. My name is Mei Hui Hu. I represent the applicant, Yining Zhang Corporation. And we're here to have our application for a change of manager. The business officially initially submitted our alcohol application and CV license application back in February. Since then, we went through the first Selectmen hearing, I think in March or April, and was approved. And then when the application went to APCC, and finally, we got our alcohol license approved as well. And then we started in earnest, did a lot of renovation. The place is beautiful, and Jason did a fabulous job. And I hope that we can get a lot of community support. But there's just one wrinkle. The proposed manager in the initial application, because his family obligation, he's unable to continue to oversee the business. And so we're here today for a change of manager, change from the previous proposed manager to the... So this gentleman here, Jason Zhang, Jason Yang, to be our proposed manager so that we can make sure that the name, the person named on the license is actually the person who's going to be overseeing the operation.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the Board? Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, then, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the application for a change in manager at... Pursuant to the application of Yang and Zhang, so doing business as Beijing, Tokyo.
Okay, any comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, that was quick and easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go back in our agenda to the chairman's update. So as a note for folks, people should know that our meetings are available and recorded on Acton TV and are available, are shown on Acton TV and as well as available on their website, but they are... on their website, but they are now also streaming live various meetings, including the Board of Selectmen meetings on, um, the Acton TV's Facebook page. So if you view your media that way, um, you can see our meetings on Facebook. So that is a nice, uh, new addition. Um, the environmental, the latest draft of the environmental sustainability policy is now available and it has been sent out to all of the, um, town boards and committees and is also on our website. There's a form there as well for you after you review the, um, revised sustainability policy to submit any comments. We are planning to discuss the policy at our October 15th Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, so please submit any comments either through the forum or to the Board of Selectmen email by October 11th. The town's professional development and team day is this Friday, so most offices will be closed except for public safety. Um, the one I feel like I always hear complaints about are people that go to the transfer station. So make sure to alter your plans this week and not plan to go to the transfer station on Friday. Um, it's a great day and I think hopefully most, if not all of the members of the Board of Selectmen, uh, will be there. Um, there will also be an open house for the Human Services and Senior Center this Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00 PM to celebrate the one year anniversary of the building being open. Um, the town manager has planned a really great event with, um, all of the different, um, departments that are represented at that facility there as well as some of the other departments so that we talks about tax relief. Um, you can get your flu shot. You can meet with the chief of police and the chief of the fire department, um, as well as many other things. So hopefully folks can stop by sometime that day. Um, the Acton Boxer, Acton Boxer Farmers Market is having their, uh, 10th anniversary celebration this Friday at NARA at 5:00 PM. I'm not sure if tickets are still available for sale, um, but if they are, I encourage you to purchase one and attend. Uh, I know they will be having food there made, um, by a number of the vendors at, that are at the farmers market. So it should be a, a good event. Um, as was mentioned earlier, there is a water workshop hosted by the Water Resources Advisory Committee this Saturday, uh, starting at 8:00 AM in Town Hall. It is open to the public if you would like to attend. And, um, previously there was a, my, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting scheduled for September 21st, 24th. Uh, we are no longer having that meeting and our next meeting will be on October 1st. Mr. Manager, do you have any update? I might have stolen some of yours.
Yes, you, yes, you did. But, um, I'd like to reinforce the, the excitement about our September 20th open house at the Human Services Facility. It's a, it's going to be a great event, uh, with a lot of great interaction with the town services that, that you know about and maybe some that you don't know about. So please come out and check it out. 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Uh, I just want to mention that on Friday in this room, we held a recount for the primary election. And I want to thank our town clerk Eva and her team of staff and volunteers who are doing a great job. Uh, we got a lot of great feedback about how professionally it was run. And also they did a nice job with the election a few weeks ago. So, thank you.
They did. That was a big effort. So thank you very much. Yes, John.
Yes, for either Katie or John, a housekeeping question. Um, has our necessary paperwork been filed with the Secretary of the Commonwealth for our marijuana, uh, recreational marijuana ban? Ballot question?
Yes. The information that, um, is, the language of the ballot has, uh, been sent through our town clerk's office to the secretaries. There's been, um, with the recount, I think that it's been busy in that office. But yes, the information, uh, information has been sent and we'll, we'll be all set for having it on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well done.
Okay. So that concludes chairman's update, the operational update, as well as our hearings and appointments. So we will move on to selectmen's business. The first item is recognition of the Nara Park lifeguards. And I will turn it over to Mr. Manager.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we have a few members in the Recreation Department here this evening. I wonder if they'd be willing to stand over by the podium while I give my brief remarks. Melissa, Mary Lou, anyone, anyone else out there? Uh, so on, earlier this year, um, over at Nara Park, we had a very scary incident where, um, our lifeguards and our department really showed how, how excellent and how well trained they are. And, uh, they actually saved a life on the beach that day. So in recognition of their outstanding, uh, work, um, the State Senate actually has given us a citation to pass along as well as the House of Representatives. Uh, so I, I'd just like to quickly read it. It says, uh, official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to the Town of Acton Department of Recreation in recognition of your commitment to providing a safe and enjoyable environment with high quality lifeguard training as evidenced at Nara Park on August 10th, 2018. Uh, so, and we have a, this, a similar thing from the, from the House of Representatives. I'm really proud of the work that, that the team did out there that day. And it could have been a very difficult, uh, and tragic afternoon and, uh, your work helped with that. So I'd like to introduce Melissa, uh, the Recreation Coordinator, just to say a few words about that evening and come get your citations.
Thank you. Um, so we do a weekly training for lifeguards. So lifeguards get trained and they're, they're trained for two years. And they could have been trained two years ago, but not be practicing these skills. So I think it's important. So we do a weekly training. I, I go out there, I train them. Um, and it was very useful. Um, the guards that saved the children that, um, that day, uh, I'd like to recognize them. It's Gerald Arnold, um, Andrew Dickinson and Julia Bierman. Um, and they did retrieve the child out of the water, um, and performed CPR, saved, saved her. Um, and yeah, it was a very scary moment, but we, we pulled together as a team and it, it worked out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, would you, will you accept these citations on behalf of the department, please? Congratulations.
So on the app of the board, I just want to say thank you so much to Melissa and to the entire Recreation Department team. Um, as you noted, many people don't do that kind of ongoing training. And it's wonderful to see, um, that you do that and how important it is. Um, you can go many years without having to need it, but when you do, you do. And, and it's really important that, that they were all prepared. So thank you so much. Um, and I know the families of the town, thank you as well. Um, and you won a wonderful camp. I know it's a lot of work and, um, it really, uh, all of your organization and and work pays off. And thank you very much to those, to those lifeguards. So, thank you on behalf of the town. Okay. So next up is to adopt the goals, um, of the Board of Selectmen established July 30th, 2018. Um, so the Board of Selectmen had a meeting on July 30th and talked about our, um, short term and long term goals. Generally, we define short term goals as anything that we think or hope we can accomplish within one year. Um, one year meaning a fiscal year. And long term goals are things that are longer than that. Um, so we, uh, each member goes around and says different goals that they have. And then we all take turns voting on them and you get five votes, um, weighted votes. So you give, you know, the most points to your top, uh, um, goal. And then we average those out and end up hopefully with top five. Sometimes there are ties. So this year we have, um, seven short term and five long term goals. So I can read through those quickly. Um, the first, the short term goals are, uh, one, in order of, uh, receiving the most points, secure funding for Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Project to proceed with the next phase of design as required for the State Transportation Improvement Program. Two, acquire South Acton Parcel to provide additional commuter parking. Three, conduct a preliminary long-term capital planning process in coordination with the school district. Four, adopt the environmental sustainability policy. Five, develop a process for regular communication with the Acton Water District. Six, implement a program to better inform seniors of the various tax relief programs available. And seven, develop a plan to address the condition of the Asa Parlin House. The long-term goals are, one, to complete Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Improvements. Two, design and build a new North Acton Fire Station and put it into service. Three, develop long-term capital plan and provide status updates at annual town meetings. Four, support the creation of new affordable housing to reach a 10% threshold with emphasis on senior housing. And five, reduce carbon, reduce the town's carbon footprint with a focus on reducing the town reliance on natural gas. Um, is there, are there any comments or questions from members of the Board of Selectmen? I imagine not, as you were all present at that meeting. Yes, questions from the audience?
Oh, yes. I wanted to, see, I wasn't there for the beginning of the meeting and so I didn't hear what went into, uh, one of the items, the 17 Woodbury Lane. I was wondering what that meant. I heard clean up and then I heard, you know, address the condition. So I'm trying to figure out what, what was meant.
Joan, would you like to speak to it? As I believe you were the one who suggested that goal.
We're going to develop a plan.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. I think it just means to, you know, we haven't determined the future of that property and we need to figure out what to do with it.
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Then can I have a motion to adopt these goals?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next up is the SATSAC Maple Street Parking Lot Update and a recommendation from SATSAC, meaning the South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee. So David, I believe you are here on behalf of SATSAC tonight.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm here representing SATSAC. I'm also a member of the Finance Committee and, uh, David Martin sends his, uh, best wishes. He is offsite at a wedding this last weekend and is traveling back today. Uh, so the carpool lot in South Acton, a little bit of background on it, but it's relatively new entity. And there's a, a lot on the Maple Street area that provides, um, sort of an experiment or a little bit of a Petri dish, um, towards the South Acton Train Station parking. So for those of you who don't know, which is probably no one, but there's generally a, a pretty, pretty serious parking crunch with regards to the, to train station. Historically, um, the lot has been generally at capacity around 7:00 AM. There's a lot of families who typically try to get access to the train for either later train schedules or for some other scheduling around their own needs and they can find it very challenging. So at the SATSAC, we look for creative ways or any type of way to alleviate the parking situation while at the same time trying to keep the spirit of South Acton alive by not paving South Acton, by keeping the historical sites intact, et cetera, et cetera. So, all that being said, this, uh, carpool lot, um, was an experiment launched earlier this year. And it's a lot on Maple Street that I believe provides around 25 spaces that will allow commuters to essentially sign up for like a carpool sticker and they're able to park in the lot. And ideally, excuse me, we would hope that three, um, commuters at a time within carpool and using, saving the two cars that would not naturally be in the lot. Uh, but at the very least, we would remove one, one car from the lot and therefore free up a lot of the congestion in the main lot and the peripheral lots, uh, around the train station. So this lot was instituted earlier this year and, um, there's been some interest in, um, initially the Board of Selectmen, I should say, approved a six month, uh, schedule for evaluating this project. And there's been a little bit of interest in reevaluating that. And some of the pushback has come from, uh, members of the town who feel that the lot itself is sitting there empty and unutilized. Um, and others who feel that the parking spots could be more effectively used in some other manner, perhaps, uh, with reserved parking or some other alternative. So that background being out of the way, um, the Board of, uh, the SATSAC Committee, uh, met a few weeks ago and made a formal recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to give the lot to the end of the year to sort of see itself out, to see what sort of, um, life that it could actually be breathed into it. And the sort of, uh, background around that was the lot itself being a relatively new entity was instituted, um, towards the beginning, towards the beginning of this last summer. And typically, most people have their commuting schedules generally set by that time. You roll into summer, the congestion around the lot alleviates itself quite a bit because a lot of people either have alternatives or stay at home or what have you during their own personal needs during the summertime. So we don't necessarily feel that the lot has really given its full shake, um, from May to September of this year. And we were hoping the Board of Selectmen would look at extending this program until December, which we think would give us enough data to determine whether it was, uh, essentially a feasible project or not. Um, at the same time of doing this, um, if the Board of Selectmen was to move forward with that motion, we would be looking to improve the marketing of the program. That's in another area of it that's been a little shortchanged. And generally the visibility around it and what, what actually you need to do to be a carpooler, to use the lot is not well-known, uh, among the town. And we think, you know, with a little bit of improved marketing outreach that, um, perhaps there would be a, a significant amount of interest. So that's essentially, uh, why I'm here representing the SATSAC's views. Um, I believe you have the formal motion, I think in your packet. David had put that together at our last meeting. We voted on that and we voted unanimously in favor of it. Um, again, I'd like to, to just think back to the conversation we had, but I believe some, some of the discussion really just revolved around, hey, we have this new lot here. We know parking's at a crunch. What other use can we put forward? Cause it's been sitting there empty. And again, I'll just sort of reiterate, the viewpoint at the time was, I think this was in late August, hey, it's still summertime. You know, we, we need a, we need just a little more time, I think. Um, and then one other point David mentioned as well was the shuttles, particularly those that, um, serve as a train station in the church. They bring commuters to the station. Those are relatively nascent, you know, sort of early on initiatives a year or so ago. And it took them a little bit of while to get traction. So the idea being here again, that, you know, a little more time, we think we could see, see that. And so that's the, the formal recommendation. And, um, if the Board of Selectmen was to vote against it, um, I do have a, a few other points along those lines, which they're not huge ones, but I, I can make them now or I could wait until you guys have discussion and public participation, et cetera.
You can make them now if you'd like.
Well, one concern is, is that Maple Street specifically is, is highly residential. And when commuters come in, they tend to drive down the lot, so-called, you know, trolling for spots, looking for anything that's available. And so our recommendation would be as if the Board of Selectmen decided not to extend the carpool lot, um, that they would, uh, make the spots in the carpool lot be reserved spots, which would essentially alleviate the, the problem of trolling and people driving up and down the street and free the residents of Maple Street from that sort of headache. Um, and, uh, I think that is essentially everything I have to say. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. Are there initial questions or comments from members of the board? John? Yep, sure. Yep.
I'm the.
John can use the.
Um, I'm the SATSAC, uh, the Selectmen's representative to SATSAC. Um, and I had been a commuter myself from the summer of 2000, daily commuter, um, from summer of 2003 to the end of last year when I retired. Now, the merits of the carpool lot are really, you know, you know, very solid. Um, if it worked, um, you could take 50 to 75 cars a day if it was fully subscribed from the main parking lot, um, down to the 25 spots in the carpool lot on Maple Street because you're getting two or three people, um, in those car, per car in that, in that lot. Now, since May, for those 25 spots, um, there has been one taker, one taker. Um, now, the rules are you need three participants to sign up. Two must be in the car each day to be admitted to the lot. So you say, why the problem? I've been in touch with, commuters have been in touch with me and we've gotten responses and the one good gentleman here tonight. Here are, here are the concerns about why the lot should be discontinued and why carpooling doesn't work. Um, everybody doesn't work the same hours. Everybody doesn't work 8:30 to 4:30. The big problem is everybody doesn't come home on, at the same time. People may take the very early train, the 6:27 train or the express train at, at 7:02. They don't all return at the same time. So you may have three people in your car and you're coming back at different hours. How do you deal with that? You also have the issue nowadays that people work home for part of the week. So how do you reconcile that within your, within your carpool? To the argument that it's not been published, um, enough, I mean, there's really been no effort by the town to publish it. There's been no effort by SATSAC to advance it. Um, when the lot opened, now the carpool lot is, is owned by the MBTA and they have just basically told us, we can use it. Um, so it's not a town lot. Um, when it was open, before it was determined to be a carpool lot, people flocked into it every day and the 25 spots were, were filled. Um, a sign went up on, on or about May. A sign went up on, on about May 11, a posting that said, this is now a carpool lot, check the website. It was on the SATSAC website. And it spelled out all the terms. If people were curious, they looked. You know, what I have learned is that many people are, are aware of it. It's just, the arrangements are just not acceptable. Now, I just want to relate some of, you know, you know, my experiences. Now, I, our kids have been out for, for many years, but I loved the 7:02 express train. As it became more and more popular, it became really oversubscribed in terms of people parking. So, it, it had become a situation where you really had to get in there by 6:40 to 6:45 in the morning for a 7:02 train to comfortably get a place to park. So, think about like this is a, as a, getting to the parking lot became a stressor. If you, if you spent a few minutes watching Morning Joe on television or read an article online or looked at the morning paper, you could lose five minutes in the process. I'd be going down Prospect Street, going a little faster than I needed to, making the turn onto Central Street, make the right turn in the parking lot and go, oh my God, there's a whole backup of cars there, I'm never going to be able to get into the lot today. This is a lousy way to start the day. I got fairly good at being able to look ahead and saying, well, maybe there are more spots. So how I adjusted to that and relieved my stress, and remember, I didn't have kids to get off in the morning for all these years, I just shifted to the 6:27 train where I would leave the house at 6:15, get there in about five minutes and jump on the, on, on the 6:27 train. Now, you know, all of this is by way of saying, you know, we have spaces, we need more spaces, we're never going to get enough spaces. Bill Patterson, a gentleman who I've met during the course of this, will address it from a perspective of dual-income families where one parent has to get to work very early in the morning, the other parent, as I had to do years ago, was getting the kids up and out to their, to their preschool arrangements. We have heard today from, from three commuters, Anna Ivakovik, Allison Brown, and Raj Manshando, who talked about their experiences of the stress, the kids, and making it all work. And those 25 spots just can't sit vacant anymore while we continue the experience. Also, I heard from another colleague, Bill, Bill Newsom, earlier. Now, to the comment about cross-town connect and how it took two years for that to connect and for people to take advantage of it, those are buses that we have, which have stops at the, I think it's Lutheran Church on Prospect and 111 and at the West Acton Fire Station. That did take probably two years, but all you have to do is turn around one person who would say, look, this is probably a better way for me. You don't have to partner with three other people. That's key. Now, the environment, you know, we talk here a lot about sustainability, about policy items, policy initiatives, what big, bold things can we do? The simplest thing we can do as a community is get cars off of Route 2 and into the commuter parking lots and people to get on those trains. I was introduced by Janet Adachi to the 495 partnership and I went to a meeting two weeks ago, I think John was there, Shelby, Shelby was there and David Martin was there. And the MBTA, the towns of Ayer, the town of Littleton are all focusing on more parking lots. Ayer is actually building a parking deck and they've got funding for it. I asked the group, I said, and I explained this experience with our carpool lot, that it was a good idea and here are our challenges, can you help me, what things might we do better with that? And they had really nothing, you know, to offer, that, you know, carpools have nothing that they've attempted. One of the fellows from Keolis that runs the train lines, talked about his experience in Britain, in the United Kingdom, where they've tried carpooling and it, and it just didn't, you know, it just didn't work. And one of the individuals in the group said, you know, she could see the confusion that it brings between getting to the lots and getting kids off to preschool programs. So, you know, keep in mind in this, commuting to the good jobs that people go to and from here to Cambridge and Boston, it's basically an hour and a half each way from the time you leave your house, you get to the station, you wait for the train, you get to either Porter or North Station, you either walk to work or, or pick up the red line, you know, or the green line. It's an hour and a half each way and we don't have to make it more complicated. You know, we're out of the summer season, we're into the beginning of the high season for commuter rapid transit. It will get more, more conflicted as we get into the colder weather when people don't use cars to drive to places and they will be back on the train. Right now, we have about 445 spaces. So, what I would ask my colleagues to think about, and this is again, a balancing of interests. The commuters, which are a vital part of our community, people who are going to Boston and Cambridge for good jobs, who we'll be looking to in the years ahead for support, for debt exclusion overrides, for new twin school, for a fire station, for North Acton, they need to get to work in, in as stress-free a way as we can. Open up those spots to monthly, monthly, for a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a month for reserved parking where you buy a space for a hundred dollars a month. The trade-off to the South Acton community who is legitimately concerned about traffic through the area, people circling the lots, is you're going to get 25 spaces that are reserved, so you're not going to have that problem. So, the companion motion that I would like to present to the group is that commencing October 1, 2018, the 24 available spots in the carpool lot be converted to reserve monthly spaces at the rate of a hundred dollars a month and that the town manager shall direct the town staff to make the appropriate arrangements for the transition and implementation.
Okay. No, so we're not going to do that yet. We're not at the point of making a motion. We're going to have discussion first.
Okay.
So do any other Board of Selectmen have comments that are perhaps briefer?
I just wanted to know where I was.
Sure. I appreciate it, Joan.
If you haven't figured it out.
Some of us still take the train and have to get up early to catch it. Any comments from Selectmen?
Well, Joan, that was very eloquent, very long, and I have thought about it because I know we talked about this some time ago. And I have a really different perspective. I'm inclined to agree with what SATSAC's recommendation is. I mean, first of all, human beings will take the path of least resistance. If you make parking spaces available, that's what they'll go for. I happen to be a person who has rarely used the commuter rail. And when I was growing, when I was living in Sudbury, I took the commuter rail from Lincoln to go to a job when I was in law school and discovered the shortcomings of the commuter rail when you're coming home and you miss that train and you're in the train station for an hour with assorted and sundry people around you and you're wondering if you're going to survive till the train arrives. So I, I became a fan of the MBTA, the subway, and I always drove when I was commuting into town regularly. I would drive to Elway. I still go to Elway now, however, I have to get there by seven to get a park, to be assured of a parking space. But that's my way of dealing with the stress of commuting, or it would be too, if I were commuting into town today for a job. I, you know, I think that I have never driven, I've never been one of these people who drives all the way into downtown Boston, parks for whatever, 50, $75 a day. That is, you know, I don't understand how those people can stand it. But my concern is that if you open up this lot to monthly spots or whatever, you're solving the problems of 24, 25 people. My guess is that the demand for parking at South Acton far exceeds that. And so we're still going to have, we're not going to solve the, the problem of demand exceeding the spaces we have. Now, there have been people who've talked about building a deck, which will get the hack, raise the hackles of all the H, the historical people and probably everybody in the neighborhood. At the same time, you have, the alternative is to have people sort of cruising, looking for parking spots. There's really no good solution. My inclination, however, in the short term, is to see if we can get people to subscribe to carpooling. Because if we just open up the spaces, we've just made life easier, people won't even bother to try it. The reason I became a public transit fan was because the prospect of driving everywhere that I had to go was untenable. I didn't want to do it because it was a real pain. And sometimes you have to have people experience inconvenience to the point where they're willing to try something different. And that's what I think that the carpooling lot is, you know, an opportunity to do. Of course, there will be people who will complain if we continue the experiment until December, they will complain from now until December and, and won't change their habits and we'll be hoping that we're going to at that point open the lot to, to spaces. But I just think that long-term, we have to be thinking beyond just creating more spaces in the parking lot on the same level because we're running out of space. And, you know, I don't know what the solution is, but get cars off the road, how do you do it? It's not simply getting them into the parking lots locally. It's getting, really getting them off the road. So anyhow, but I, I would like to see this continue until at least a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you, Janet. Peter, any comments? Do you want to wait? Okay. Okay, Joan?
Well, I was on the board when we bought that land for the main parking lot. And when we went down to look at it, there were pheasants walking across the piece of land, so I don't think we've seen that in a long time. I hate to see those spaces empty until December. And is there some way we can make those spaces available and at the same time, continue to see if people are willing to sign up on the carpool situation?
Okay. So, I'm a daily commuter, somebody who uses the, the commuter rail and that uses the resident parking, so I generally park, if I'm very, very lucky, at the, what I call the closer lot on, on River Street and most days at School Street behind the fire station. And I catch the 7:53 train, which is my preferred semi-express train. And what I think many people who are parents or others have to catch, and even that is probably too early for, for many parents, but in order to do that, I have to get nowadays to the lot increasingly earlier. I think I was there before 7:30 this morning and I had one of the last four spots to get there. And as John said, you have this, you know, stress, I left my house, it's Monday morning, I'm tired and, you know, I was running a little behind and realized I was leaving two or three minutes later than I normally, normally do and my heart was racing and I was cursing the person driving in front of me for going too slow because I was afraid we'd hit the train, the 7:27 train and I'd have to wait for that and then I wouldn't get a spot. And it has happened. And frankly, what usually happens is if you can't get a spot there, a lot of times people end up driving into the city. So you're not taking a car off the road to, to do that. And, you know, I, I agree with, with John's point that, you know, I, it's, it's a good idea and concept and I supported it because I thought this could be a really great way to get even more cars off the road, to, to get more than 24, relieve more than 24 kind of spaces. But in practice, I don't, I've struggled to see how it would work. I know personally, I have a quite erratic schedule from being on the board. I have to be, I had to take the 5 o'clock train home this night instead of the 5:30. Some nights I have to get the 4:30 train home, some days I have to work in our Westboro office or I have to work from home or I'm not. So this week, I took the 5 o'clock train home, I'll take the 5:35, I'll work from home and I'll take a day off. So I can't, you know, I would not be a good carpool companion because I'm not reliable at all. And frankly, that's how most people's lives unfortunately are, is that you're not reliable. And I, and I also think for people with children, there's always the fear of, what if my kid is sick and how do I get home to them if I don't have my car there or if I have to make sure that car is there for, you know, the other two people that I took the train in with this morning? And so I think the logistics of the carpool lot are, are going to be an undue burden on the majority of people. So my preference would be to at least release half of these parking spaces now to be monthly spots and we could keep, you know, half or even a smaller number of those until December to see if there are some people that sign up because that, that would be great if they do. And, and I get your point of trying to make it difficult for, for folks and forcing them to have to think about something new. It's already difficult and people already are thinking about new things. I did the shuttle for many years and I did see that increase steadily in use, actually frankly, a lot from people outside of town because we, we do have preferable train times in Acton as opposed to some of the other neighboring communities. And it is a great solution for people. It doesn't work for everybody. There were the stressful days where if I thought I had to get home on a train, that there wasn't a shuttle for, you know, I, you were walking a mile or two to get there, but you could make that work. This one is a lot harder for me to visualize how people even do make it work. And I had asked Doug to put together some information on the history of the rail shuttle so that we could see what, you know, their uptick looked like. And it did take a while to go off, but from what I could see, even from the beginning, there were at least, you know, 20 people using the shuttle or 20 rides a day, so maybe that was, you know, 10 people using it. And right now, we have, I think you said one person signed up, but I've never seen, I don't think I've ever seen a car in that lot since it's turned, except for the parking, for the Espet Rail Trail Parking. So I'm not sure that anybody actually is using it. And I just think if we've had it for months and there's zero users on it, it's not even like there's some interest in it that we could try to build upon, there just seems to be none, which is just disconcerting. So, you know, and, and I hear from folks every day when I'm, I try to go incognito because I prefer some quiet time to myself where I don't have to talk about Board of Selectmen business. And so I listen to what people are saying and I hear almost every day from people when I'm walking down there or standing at the station and they say, what, you know, what is this lot? And then they learn about the carpool lot and, you know, it's just most people laughing and saying, this is, you know, a dumb idea and who are the idiots that did this? And I want to be like, oh, I'm one of the idiots that chose to do this. You know, and I don't want to raise my hand to say that then, but, you know, because I want to hear honestly what people think. And I haven't heard anybody say, that's a great idea, they should definitely, definitely do that. So my feeling would be, we should at least open half of them now and maybe come back in a few, in a few months at the end of the year and, and go from there. Janet?
I'm, I'm comfortable with your proposed compromise, so just wanted to say that so I, I don't have a lot of people trying to persuade me, although I can see where the, the tone is going, so.
Thanks, Janet. Okay, so I'll open up to the public.
Teri Fredericks, West Acton, I like the compromise, Brad, because I like compromise. But I feel like the plan should leave room for, if more people come forward, so that as people expire their personal reserved space, that the first priority is for carpool people. I also feel like carpool spots should be empty and right next to the station so that people will see how empty they are and be able to go over and read the sign about the carpool plan.
They are empty.
Oh, they're right there, okay.
Right next to the station.
And then I also would like to at least say something about this deck because this room was full of people and there were very few people that were for the idea of a deck, so I hope we don't go down that path again. While the idea of promoting commuting sounds theoretically good, it's still promoting travel. And I think we should be thinking about bringing the jobs here. I personally, during the day, am a professional working for companies that work, were remote working and everything from building bridges to, you know, office meetings are all being done remotely now. And the federal government requires one day a week to be worked from home. So the trend is to bring people, bring the jobs to the people instead of bringing the people to long distances to the jobs. It's my understanding that the wait at the rotary hasn't increased, that that has slowed, the increase has slowed. So that's a trend that also indicates that we shouldn't be accommodating more car travel, more car parking. more car parking, although I am sensitive to it. The $100 a month seems very inaccessible. I would like to have a certain portion of these reserved spots available under lottery for people who can't afford such a high price. I laud Boxborough and Air for coming up with parking solutions. I feel like this is a regional problem that can't always be Acton. No matter how many spaces we have, it's never going to be enough. And so I hope that they do their share, which they seem that they are, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll make one comment as a commuter based on the comments of Acton and, I think you meant Littleton and, and Air. The problem is that they don't have the express trains. And so people from out of town, while they know it's easier to get parking and sometimes cheaper to get parking other places, they still come to Acton because we have the 702 express, because the 430 express comes to us. And so it's just frankly, based on the MBTA's schedule. And we've benefited from it by having a full lot every day and being able to make a lot of money on that, that we can use for the parking lot, that we could use to help pay for the elevators in our new train station, that we can use for our shuttle program. But the problem is that we have, the, the downside is that we have a much higher demand for parking than other places. I could probably get parking in Concord if I wanted, but their trains aren't great. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Ben Patterson, 33 Nagal Kill Road. I've, this, the, the carpool lot experience has actually been very educational for me. Been able to meet folks on the committee and understand a lot of the thinking behind it. I wanted to come tonight to give you my perspective, so Mr. Benson called out some of that already. My wife and I both work. My wife is a teacher in a nearby town, so I am the person in charge of drop-off. I bring my children to their elementary school basically before extended day opens and then go to the commuter rail lot. And it's still a risk that I won't have a spot, especially after November 1st. When the lot originally sort of opened, didn't open officially, you could feel the, you could feel the pressure releasing on the auxiliary lots. And I think when you're looking at the people impacted, it is the people that are unable to get there by 6:40 and have things in their lives that prevent them from doing that. Fortunately, you know, in the time I have been able to get parking, I've been able to participate in the community, been able to coach my son's baseball teams. If it was a carpool kind of situation, I would be unable to do that because each day the commute would be a little different. My path of travel would vary from day to day, so I don't think that's practical. Also, in terms of sort of the carpool, like sort of situation in Acton, we have eight lots. We have four different systems that people need to understand and navigate. It's very complicated and I think this just adds extra complexity. Be great to just simplify it for, for the citizens, to give them, I guess, clearer choices. In terms of the environmental impact and arguments, in some moment of mathematical clarity and Googling, right, you figure out how far it is to the Concord Station, how much carbon you're putting in the air by driving there instead of Acton, and it's, it's really significant. Car pollution is the number one polluter now, and I think I can certainly understand the argument that we need to get people to not park. I think the first thing we should really do is encourage people to take the public transportation from their town, and I think this is a really key piece of it. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to end. It's, it's very impractical for us, for working families. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Decker. I live about on School Street. I actually want to give the perspective of people who probably would be the most likely to use the carpool lot and just frankly say it's not happening. Me and my husband are probably the epitome of who kind of they were trying to aim for the carpool lot with. We don't have any children as of yet. I actually have a friend who lives in town, who works at my office, so we're on the exact same schedule, occasionally in the same projects even. And the thing is, at the end of the day, we don't have the time restrictions on our schedule that make it so a carpool's feasible. That also means we can leave our houses 20 minutes earlier and not pay the $75 a month. That's really honestly what it comes down to, is we're making it so much more inconvenient for the people who have the hardest time getting there. And there's really zero pressure on the people who can shift their schedules pretty easily. We actually did attempt to try and get a carpool together when we saw the lot and it fell apart almost instantly despite our attempts because of the problems mentioned earlier. We couldn't really get it to work out. If someone worked late, the whole thing fell apart. And we have probably some of the least restrictive schedules of any working professionals I know. If we can't make our parking, the, one of us can usually work from home. So at the end of the day, if we can't make it work, I really don't see anybody else giving it that shot. And so I just wanted to give the perspective of probably someone a little bit different in, in the Acton area who's not dealing with all this pressure. And the irony of it is, we're the people who probably could use it, we're not going to because the cost is, is, isn't worth it, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bill Newsom, 49 Woodbury Lane in Acton. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. So I'll just echo what Ben and others have already said about the pressures of trying to find parking in the morning. And Katie, I appreciate all your, being on the committee and sharing all your firsthand experiences with this. You spoke and it was like exactly what I go through every day. And so I appreciate that. And so when this lot, because I often, like you, have parked behind the fire station and I would walk, walk across, to cross over to Maple Street and walk by, before this lot was developed, it was a big pile of dirt. And I said to myself, "God, that would be amazing if they built a parking lot there. That would be the greatest thing ever." And then it was like Field of Dreams or something, like all of a sudden there was, before you knew it, there was a parking lot there. And then they painted park, "It was wonderful, I forget to park there." It was just all blacktop and then they painted parking spaces. "Oh my God, this is amazing." And so I don't know how long it was, two or three months or something, I parked there without incident. And it was great because it was just another option. It just, it just like Ben said, it just, you felt the relief of having there be some other option to find parking. And then eventually, come May, we all had the, the flyers put on our windshields, you know, and it all came to a crashing halt because of the carpool parking lot and thought, "Well, that stinks." You know, but, you know, in theory, I don't think it's the worst idea in the world and I completely understand the philosophy behind trying to start a program like that. But, you know, since May, it has been completely depressing, looking out the train window at all the empty spaces except for the, the black BMW SUV that's there, who is the one person, I assume, who's registered for this program. And it's, it's, it is disheartening, you know, because you feel like, you know, I think I got like the last spot in the parking lot today, in the main lot. And you do think, well, it's just another option, you know? But the one thing I want to make a comment about is that, is that how, whether, how knowledgeable people are about this carpool program. And I know Katie, you said you've spoken to people who don't know, you know, they're, don't know what the lot is for. I happen to have a gentleman on the platform come up to me last week and ask me what the deal with this parking lot was and I, and I was telling him about it. And then just tonight, I was telling my son's soccer coach that I was going to the selectmen's meeting and to talk about, we're going to talk about the parking lot. And now, this is a woman I see on the train every single day and she had no idea what the deal was with the parking lot. So what I wanted to suggest was that if you, if you really want people to try, to basically try to make this work, I think you have to do a better job promoting it and publicizing it. And, you know, I'm sure if I dug deep enough on the town's website or looked somewhere, I could probably find out something about it. But that's, that's not, you know, you know, I don't know how many, there must be 200 people or more waiting for that, the 702 train every morning. I, I don't know how many of them would take the time to try to find, find out about it on a web, on a webpage versus there being something posted in the parking lot advertising it. I know that when I want to promote anything, I have to really advertise it. And so I just wanted to, you know, say, I agree with the compromise wholeheartedly of turning half of the spaces at least over to, you know, renting them out or, you know, I'll just put my hand up and say, permit parking, because I would love that, but keeping some of them for this program, because I do, I do think it's worthwhile. But I think you have to really actively promote it. And I got to attend the, a committee meeting a few months ago of the South Acton Train Parking Committee. And I made the recommendation to them that in August, they really start publicizing this program because everybody that parks in that lot over the summer, that feels like everybody's on vacation and they can come in and grab every, any spot they want, although it's not that good anymore, but still, it's a lot easier. Everybody knows that come September, it's like a curtain comes down and it's like the battle begins, you know? And I thought they should start promoting it so that they would, you know, have people think, will start thinking, "Well gee, maybe I should, I know September's coming, maybe I should look into this, try to find a couple of people who want a carpool with me." And I, and I, you know, I never saw anything promoting it. So if you're not doing a good job promoting it now and you still only have one car signed up for it, I don't know how many more cars you're expecting to have by December or next April when you have the next town meeting, so. So anyway, that is, those are my thoughts on the subject.
Thank you.
Ken Marino, School Street. I just wanted to provide a counterpoint to the gentleman who just spoke. My experience has been on the commuter rail platform that there's almost always one person talking about the lot and there's almost always a fairly well-educated group of people who are discussing, excuse me, discussing how to get a space in the lot. And the overwhelming majority of the conversations have gone something like, "Oh, those are the restrictions, that's not feasible." And I think that word of mouth has really spread about what it takes to get in this lot and it just hasn't been found to be feasible. I don't think the problem is so much advertising at this point, because I would say, based on the number of conversations I've seen, people are at least partially aware and have ruled it out completely.
Thank you.
Hi, Fanny Osmond, Half Moon Hill. I'm also on the Transportation Advisory Committee. A few little comments, not necessarily always in order. If you do keep a carpool lot, I think it would be useful to ask Crosstown Connect to assist with maybe trying some technical solutions, like helping carpoolers reach each other. We have the technology so people could get in touch with each other and try to improve connections that way. Shuttleling sometimes is a big challenge, as you know, and so the things that really will help the shuttling is when it's frequent, when it's reliable, when the trip is as short as possible. We started an extended rail shuttle to the other side of town, but it was hard to use it, hard to get it to be what we wanted because drivers are presently hard to find. So I wanted to put a plug out, if you know anybody who wants to be a driver. Also, that caused that break in the rail shuttle, which is very annoying, that certain shuttles that, certain trains that used to be met are not met. And I think that's a problem. I would love if there was a little more fluidity and communication between TAC, Transportation Advisory Committee, SATSAC, and Crosstown Connect. I feel like sometimes we're trying to find solutions to the similar problems. I also always want to speak up for the later arrivals. It's very, very useful that you can park after 10 for people who go late, but for the people who go in between 7 and the 8:43 train, I think if, if you're trying to use this lot, maybe make it a late arrival, maybe make it only available for the 8:42 or something or, or something like that. I, I just wanted to speak up for that. Maynard has a very successful shuttle and I think one of the reasons it's successful is because they're being very creative, first of all, in the funding of it. It costs about half the cost of the others. It goes past certain housing developments in Acton. But because of the density of Maynard and the short distance, it makes it easier. I think the cat bus, and I just wanted, could you raise your hand if you know what the cat bus is? So about five or six people out of the room. The cat bus is our fixed route that goes around and around town. And one of the challenges is the fact that it was not based on the rail's schedule, but based on trying to make it come to the same place at the same hour, every hour on the hour. And that meant that it's not as useful as a rail shuttle. That's something that could be looked at because I do believe shuttling people from their neighborhoods, finding out where are all these people who are complaining that there's not enough spots at the station are coming from, and shuttle solutions can help. But it has to be convenient and all those things I mentioned.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Micro Transit, there's a company which I would love to come tell you about called Transloq that wants to do for $25,000 a study. And I would like to be able to tell you all about what micro transit is, which is sort of taking our fixed routes and making them more Uber, Lyft-like, if I summed it up. So I would, that could help alleviate some of this. Bathrooms and coffee.
Okay. There is a coffee truck now. I don't know how many people know about that. There is a coffee truck, it's on the other side of the, by the main lot and I think he's quite popular, so, yes.
The thing that Fanny's talking about, there's a MAC, MAPC trial of that and they're looking for new towns to look at and it's also incorporating private drivers into the system. So it's like an Uber Lyft for commuters and local drivers. But one of the reasons I stood up is that I feel like, I didn't realize it was $75 a month for the carpool. I think it should be free. That's my first point. My second point is that I feel like if we want the carpool people to participate, potential carpool people, there's got to be room, I think, to pick up other people who aren't currently signed up for carpool, like some kind of system in that one that she's speaking about, that Fanny was talking about, is like that. People sign up to be like a substitute carpool extra person. And then if they're not going to fill that spot with their regular carpool person, they put it out onto the list and people say, "Oh, I'll take that." And so they get a free ride to the pair, to the, to the station. So I think that we do need to think out of the box relative to these solutions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments from members of the audience, can I get a sense, I feel like there are a few options, either the SATSAC recommendation, which is to keep things as is through the end of December. We could go with some sort of compromise. I think right now, my preference would be to, there are 24 spaces, that does not include the Asbit spaces?
That's right.
Okay. So just so people know, and for the awareness of people too, that they will always see some spaces there, probably empty. There are a few spaces there that are for the Asbit River Rail Trail and those are the spots that are for four hours a day, because I heard somebody asking about that this morning. And that's what those are about. So I could see us churning 16 of the spots right now over to monthly and leaving eight as a trial, or we could convert all 24. So if I can get a sense of the board so that then we can do a motion about where people's preferences are? John, are you still at turn all?
I would convert all 24 spaces right now. I think School Street couple was, was, you know, was, you know, really hit the nail on the head. The, you know, proposal, however, you know, it, you know, was meant in the, you know, the best spirit, but it just, it's not practical. It just doesn't work. People are talking about it. They've discussed it. We've, they've really voted. And I don't think we as a, as a governing body should be trying to impose a solution on them. We'll freeze these spots or as many as we can and hopefully you will see our point of view and become carpoolers. You know, I think that's, that's just not the way to work. We've tried it, it hasn't worked. We just need as many spaces as we can. It's not going to solve the problem, but we can't have... It's not going to solve the problem, but we can't have spaces sitting there as we go into the high demand season and just say, well, you know, our government wants us to, you know, keep trying at this. So I would renew my motion that, you know, as of October 1, those 24 spaces be converted to reserved spaces at the rate of $100 a month, and the town manager be directed to direct his staff to make the appropriate arrangements. Let's try that, try that first, and hopefully we can get support for that.
So Joan, what's your leaning of the three, sort of, three to four options?
I would support John's.
Okay, Peter, where do you?
Wow. You know, I've lived in Acton for 30 years. For the first 25 years I was a commuter, I worked in Boston. I adopted John's strategy of taking a very early train, so I could be sure that I got a space every day. I retired five years ago and then started back to work about six months ago in Boston. And so now I drive to West Concord every day in order to park. I, after I retired, I got lazy and started sleeping in a little, so I'm now taking a little later train. But, you know, it's funny, West Concord doesn't seem to fill up as much. And it's, I live very close to the train station, but it's five minutes to West Concord. So anyway, that's my story. I, you know, I think I support John's initiative. I worked with SATSAC from the very beginning. We built the train station, it wasn't just SATSAC, but a lot of people in town, that was a huge accomplishment. I respect SATSAC, you know, David Martin's done a great job chairing it. And it doesn't seem to me like this solution had a lot of data to back it up, I would say, I guess. It was an experiment, doesn't seem to work. I mean, I dropped my wife off at the train before I started back to work. It's just a shame that that lot is sitting there empty every day. And so reluctantly, I guess I agree with John.
Janet?
I'm still in support of the compromise. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that it's ultimately, we're going to have to find a long-term solution if, and it may involve regional planning or something like that. There's just too many cars, too many people trying to, with too many schedules trying to get to too many places. And, you know, for people like my husband who drives, he drives all the way to MIT every morning, he does it at 5 o'clock in the morning, and there are people on the road. And there are times when even at 5 o'clock in the morning, where people are complaining about the traffic. But, you know, he has a parking space at, on campus and all that, but, you know, they're coming back. You know, if he leaves after 3 o'clock, which is usual, the traffic is just awful. I mean, it's just, it just, they're just, it's much worse commuting anywhere. And even in the day, in the middle of the day in Acton, you know, I'm thinking, what are all these people doing? You know, aren't they supposed to be working? Or are they all, like me, not working and just sort of driving around running errands? But it's just really unpleasant generally to drive. You know, it's really, you can see why people stay at home and order everything online and have it delivered, because you don't have to deal with driving at all. But, you know, unfortunately, our lives are such that we have to drive, we have to, and there we are, we're all out there, in our, one person in our, each car, so. But I, I would, you know, I'd like to sort of, you know, maybe, maybe we can get a little more research done about where, if anywhere, carpooling has worked and how you have to, and maybe you have to make it free to park. I don't know what the incentive is for people to, because there have to be some people who don't have, that have, that have consonant sort of schedules, but, you know, 16 is pretty generous to free up. And the fact is, John, is that the spaces wouldn't be available at all if we hadn't created a lot. So we're adding, we're, you know, we're adding spaces that otherwise...
The MBTA credit.
Well, but, but we're figuring out what to do with them, you know, and, you know, it's up to us, so anyhow.
Okay. I mean, selfishly, I definitely want to go to freeing up the 24 spots, because it makes my life a lot easier in the morning. There is that, you really did notice a difference when those spots were available. And, you know, it, it might take time. I think we will very quickly see, even at $100 a month, those spots free up, which then frees up the residential, which is $100 a year, which is an affordable option. I'm, I'm not paying $100 a month to park somewhere, but the $100 a year is affordable if you can actually get a spot. So it, it does relieve this pressure, and I think allow people who can afford those more expensive options, the ability to, to, to park in the more affordable residential spots. So, you know, and, and seeing the board leaning that way, I'm definitely willing to go that way. Yes, Peter?
Are you, we talking about making these reserved?
Yeah, because that, so that was the recommendation.
For $100 a month?
Right.
Okay.
Which is the same as the other reserved spots, yeah. Yes.
I don't know why the reservation system always bothers me, but if you do go that way, then I hope you somehow open it up to the people who have been walking from, you know, a lot of people rent the places on Jones Field for the same price. And if suddenly they aren't given the option to try to get in a lottery or something to get a spot right next to the station, somehow it feels like it would be fair to figure out a way that you can open up the opportunity equally to everyone. That said, I still, for some reason, just charging a whole lot and having the reserved spaces, I don't know why, it just doesn't feel good. On TAC, they always talk about, you know, supply and demand, just make it really expensive, but that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, the idea of the reserves, this is part of, you know, everything we do is a balancing of interests. And it, it opens 24 additional spots, reserve spots, people would have to pay for that. But it also accommodates, answers issues of the South Acton neighborhood that they don't want, where they prefer not a sticker lot where people are circling their neighborhoods looking to get in. You just have 24 people who know they have their spot, and that would bring down the traffic in South Acton. I think that's something we have to respect and work on. That's fair.
Okay. I, I hope you do reserve some of them, like eight of them, to see if SATSAC can help make it work, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll, one more comment, then we're going to take a vote.
I was just going to say that I think that it, what it will do, even if you're reserving the spaces in this lot for $100 a space, it'll pull people out of the main lot. And then those reserved, for the people that pay annual permit stickers like me, will get a spot. So it does benefit us. But what I was thinking, I, I wanted to say earlier, was that as far as the people that are kind of being the target audience of this carpool thing, so when I get off the train today, I have to leave and, and take the 4:30 express train at least four out of the five days a week to pick up my kids from school. And then, like a lot of other parents, do the curly shuffle every night, chauffeuring them around. So tonight I got off the train, I had to pick up both, both my kids, take my daughter to dance in West Concord, and then my son to soccer practice. And I was thinking that, you know, any of the other parents that I'm friendly with, that I take the train with, I mean, they're all in the same boat I am. So as far as finding another one or even two other people like me to carpool, it's like, we're all in the same boat doing the same thing. And when I get off that train, I go to my car and I have to go, you know? And so it's kind of tough when you think, well, well, wait a minute, I, I got to wait for Joe to get off the train. Where's Joe? Wasn't he, oh, he stayed at work late? You know, or if I wanted to stay at work late and somebody else had some other obligation, I don't really know how, you know, it speaks to the feasibility of this. But what I wanted to say is, like I said before, I don't think it's the worst idea in the world, and I would encourage, no matter what happens to these spaces, that you try to find ways to promote carpooling in the town of Acton, no matter what, because anybody who parks in any space in the town of Acton, whether it's in the main lot, whether it's behind the fire station, could try to seek out another person or maybe try to make a connection in which, if it was feasible for them to carpool, no matter what happens with this lot, you know? It is a good idea, so anyhow.
Okay, no, I'm going to go to a motion and a vote at this point.
Yeah, just for my own information, what's a resident sticker cost this year?
Hundred bucks a year.
A year?
Yeah, so it is a much significantly affordable option. Okay, John, would you like to make your motion?
Yes, okay. So motion be commencing October 1, 2018, the 24 available spaces in the carpool lot be converted to reserved monthly spaces at the rate of $100 per month. The town manager shall direct town staff to make the appropriate arrangements.
Second. Okay, Joan seconds. Any other comments from board members? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, all right, so we will move forward with that, and we will think about the issue of, I think it's worthwhile to consider the Jones Field Parkers as well, and if there's some sort of lottery for that. Okay, up next, we have a presentation from Avalon Acton regarding the revised development plan. All right, welcome forward. Thank you for waiting tonight. Yeah.
I'll write it for you right now.
Oh, great, okay, I think we're pulling that up.
So while we're doing that, let me just introduce, well, first of all, I'm Scott Dale with Avalon Bay Communities. And with me this evening is Michaela DeSantis, a colleague of mine with Avalon Bay, and Paul Momney from the firm of Gulson and Storrs, who is Avalon Bay's counsel relative to this matter. So, who's got the? First of all, thank you for the time this evening. I know it's, these meetings are always busy, so we'll, we'll try and be, be as brief as possible and explain why we're here this evening. So the purpose of our visit this evening is to introduce to you Avalon Acton Phase Two, which is a subsequent phase of Avalon Acton that was built and constructed back in the 2006, '07 timeframe. But before we get started there, I thought, because I see some new faces here, I thought I'd just reintroduce Avalon Bay as a company and let you know who we are and what we do. So we are a nationally recognized apartment developer. We work generally all across the states, although it's really in kind of eight regional markets across the states. We have a portfolio of about 85,000 apartments in about 290 different communities in various markets across the country. Our sole focus is on apartment development. We don't build retail or even condominiums. All we build is apartment and apartment communities. We have our own in-house construction, our own in-house development, and our own in-house operations group. So we build, we design, and we build with our own construction company, and we build for our own portfolio. So it's our own management company that takes over the asset once it's built. So if you pick up the phone anywhere along the development process, right through construction or operations, it's always an Avalon person on the end of the phone, which I think makes things very seamless. Here in Boston, we have about 10,000 apartments. One of them is, one of our communities is right at the end of the commuter rail at North Station, which we just recently completed a big tall building that's there that we're very proud of. So we have about 40 communities comprising about 10,000 apartments, all different shapes and sizes, generally speaking in the greater Boston area, 495, and in some high rises, some mid-rises, and some that are traditional garden kind of style communities like we're talking about today. So as I mentioned, we're here to talk about Avalon Acton Phase Two. It is comprised of 86 apartment homes in what we call our townhouse and direct entry apartment home configuration. We'll get into a little bit more about what that means, but, but in general, that means larger apartments with a very targeted focus in terms of the demographic that we're trying to go after. There'd be a 25% affordable component. It will be permitted under Chapter 40B, just like the first phase was, and it will be targeted towards the empty nester population. And that product that we are proposing, which we've built in other locations and in other markets, has done very well with that specific demographic. So it's a combination of that particular product type, the features in those apartment homes that we'll get into describing in a minute, the finishes that we put in those apartments, as well as the amenities that go on outside the apartments, the kind of passive recreational amenities that we're proposing. All that is going to be targeted to that 55 and older demographic. This is the site. Well, actually works. It's actually a large site, 66 acres, so if you look at the perimeter in yellow, the farthest extent of that, that is actually the boundary of the site that we actually own. Some of it is in Westford. This is the Westford Acton Town Line here. This is a little piece of Littleton over here in the corner. So most of the site is actually in Acton, especially, you can see Phase One here and the remainder of the land. The piece in Westford, we're not proposing to develop anything in addition, other than what's already been built there. So that land will remain vacant. This is our sewer treatment plant back in here. This is the insulate facility right in here, and this is the vacant parcel that we're talking about. It's a, we call it Lot Four, but it's 16 acres in total, little piece in Westford back in here, but the boundary of it basically extends like that. And what we're proposing to build on is about seven, seven and a half acres right here. That red line is actually a conservation restriction line that was established back in 2005, 2006. So nothing will be built beyond that line. That line is there forever. Basically, there's a deed restriction on the remainder of the land there. So we are building in this, this portion here. A little bit of history, going back a few years. We built Avalon Acton through a comprehensive permit. The current development includes 380 apartments. There are 296 in Acton, and there are 84, these three buildings here are actually in the town of Westford. So 296 in Acton, 84 in the town of Westford, and we're proposing to add an additional 90, 86 back in this location here. It was permitted through a comprehensive permit. We're proposing to use the same process going forward. What we are planning to do is actually amend the existing permit, because in Phase One, there were actually 64 townhomes that were included in our comprehensive permit in this location. So in reality, what we're doing is converting the 64 townhomes that were located here to 86 apartments. Condominiums were proposed as for sale product, we're proposing rental product. So that's really the substantive change that we're proposing. We're going to do it through what they call a substantial change in the comprehensive permit that we already have. What that means is that we'll be submitting a full application, we'll have full hearings before the zoning board of appeals, almost like it was a brand-new process that we're restarting. So there'd be full transparency. We're here this evening just to kind of introduce this as part of that effort to be transparent and inform everybody about what we're planning. But we believe that, you know, the, the best way forward is, is just to amend the existing permit, really going back in time to what we had originally proposed there, with the change from for sale, obviously, to rental. I think that pretty much covers it. You know, the access will be down Nagog Park Road. This is Avalon Drive, so this is the roadway that was always contemplated to be accessed back through this particular portion of the land. And when, when we started to look at, when we came to the conclusion that the best use for this property was not for sale condominiums, because we fully vetted that really over the course of about 10 years, we started to look at, well, what was the best product to build here? If it's going to be rentals, what should we build? So we did our own market studies, we actually talked to our operations people on the site, and we looked at the data that we had collected on the people that actually look, lived there. And we found out some interesting things. Number one, we're doing a pretty good job at satisfying the needs of the millennial group, those people 21 to 34 years old. We have about 20 to, 25 to 30% of the people that live there fall into that age demographic, so that's pretty good. If you look at the market as a whole, the sub-market that we're looking at, where we think this, this particular community caters to, it's about 20 to 25%. So we're kind of over-indexing with that population, we're getting more than our fair share of those people 21 to 34 years old. Where we're really falling short, and the justification for proposing, what we're proposing, is in the 55 and older demographic. If you look at the renter households in our sub-market, about 35% of those people, or 35% of those households are occupied by people 55 and older. Only about 12% of the households we have in Phase One are occupied by people in that demographic group. So we're falling way short in that area. So we said, that's a real opportunity, and we should try and take advantage of that. So what we're proposing in Phase Two, as I mentioned, is really targeted towards that specific demographic. The product that we're building, the features we're putting in the apartments, as well as the amenities that we're adding to the community, are really targeted to that specific group. Just by way of example, other communities where we've built the type of product that we're proposing here, Cohasset, where we have a community of townhomes and this direct entry product that we're building, we have about a 52% penetration of households 55 and older. Even in Marlboro, where we have a similar product, there's about a 42% penetration of households 50, 55 and older. And in Sudbury, which is a new community we're building, it's not yet completed, we're in lease-up, but so far, we're about 35 to 40% penetration into that market. So we think if we build the right product, provide the right level of finish in the apartments, and the right amenities that go along with it... apartments, and the right amenities that go along with it, we think we can do a much better job of really attracting that particular demographic. And the intent really is to make it as easy as possible for someone who's moving out of a home to move into an apartment. So, that's where we're really focused. The other interesting aspect of the development, and that's what it looks like kind of on the site that we're proposing, again, a lot of smaller buildings, you know, ranging from anywhere from four apartment homes up to, I think the largest is probably eight apartments in a single building. So, smaller, larger, they all have integral garages, so basically a higher-end product. When we built the first phase, we had always contemplated 64 townhomes back here. So, all the infrastructure was put in to accommodate that. The sewer, the water, there's actually electric conduit in the ground, the roadway infrastructure, the mitigation that was put in place at the time, going back to 2005, 2006, all that contemplated development here, basically at the scale that we're talking about. So, it's all there. The sewer treatment plant that we've analyzed recently has ample capacity to accommodate what we're talking about here as well. So, with that said, that's the general introduction. I'm now going to turn it over to Michaela, who can talk a little bit more about the product that we're proposing.
Thanks, Scott. All right. So, sort of seeing the site here, I'm going to turn to the next page and just sort of almost imagine that the whole site plan is just twisting. So, in the top-right corner is where the roadway ends today, and the site, as you see it as laid out, it's just a rendered landscape image. So, 13 buildings, 86 units, and a mix of what we call these direct-entry product and townhome products. The way the site is laid out, we've tried to focus on a central green area in the middle. The Phase One has a gym, has a basketball court, a lot of active recreation. What we're trying to do here is make it more passive. So, what we're proposing in that central green area is a covered structure but open on all sides, potentially a TV in there, fire pits, barbecue area, sort of an activity lawn, just trying to make the space, socialize the area a little bit, but in a very passive way. That way, all the folks in this sort of subset of the community have a space where they can all congregate, hang out. In terms of the plan, we're making sure that there are pedestrian connections. So, you'll see sort of a central boulevard running east-west, so that way, all folks along the perimeter, especially on the left side of the page, can access that area. The roadway also runs north-south, and then in a circle. Oh, the pointer. Here we go. Thank you. The green button, yes, here we go. So, pedestrian way here, obviously vehicular access and circular here and through here. And then also making sure that there are sidewalks throughout the whole site, and then that'll continue all the way up to the Phase One and to the clubhouse. The townhomes, we have 36 townhomes of the 86 units. They all have their own garage. In total of the 86 units, 72 units have their own garage. Each unit has their own front door. So, it's different, in terms of this product and what at the existing Avalon Acton, there are no sort of common corridors or hallways. Everyone has their own front door. The, over 80% of the units will have their own garage. There's a lot more privacy, like you think of the townhome units. There's no one on top of you. There's no one in front of you. There's no one in back of you. You own, top to bottom, front to back. So, the privacy combined with a lot more storage in these units, I mean, these all average over 1,000 square feet. These units are up to 1,700 square feet. The garage, the larger footprint, they're just, like Scott mentioned earlier, a lot easier to transition from, going from a single-family home to an apartment in this community. And, yeah, I had already spoken on the amenity area a little, but just trying to provide something here, so that way, these folks don't feel like they have to potentially haul it all the way up the hill, although it's not that far, to the existing amenity space. In terms of the unit mix, we're proposing a third one-bedroom units. About 60% will be two bedrooms, and 10% will be three bedrooms. The 10% is a requirement per the 40B. I think it's great, because there actually aren't any three beds at the existing Avalon Acton. In terms of, again, we analyzed, we have, the beautiful thing about having 10,000 apartments in Massachusetts is we can look at the data, we can look at a certain type of product, and see what households, a similar demographic at another simpler community, what the demographic wants, and the 60% two-bedroom, 30% one-beds is the right mix here. And, yeah, again, I mentioned earlier, the apartments range from 900 square feet all the way up to over 1,700 square feet. And I spoke about parking, and, yeah, I think another interesting fact, too, about all the units of the 86, almost a third of them will be at ground level. So, you could almost either one bedroom specifically at ground level, or a two-bedroom with the master on the ground floor. So, again, targeting a certain demographic that may, internal stairs could potentially be an issue. So, just making sure that there is a lot of living accessible, if you wanted that, on one floor. And I can get into, sort of just some sample elevations from other townhomes we've done. So, you can see here, folks have a front door, pull right into your garage, and then you're right inside your unit. This is one of the direct-entry buildings. The site actually has a lot of grade, drops off a bit back here near the conservation easement restriction line. So, in those cases, in that instance, some buildings, we actually have sort of a terrace-level unit, and folks can just have a walkout back porch almost in a large patio area. So, some variety within all of this. And this is not actually a floor of living on the top floor. It's just, the units on the top floor are lofts, so they have these huge sort of atrium-type ceilings, really high ceilings, a lot of light, which is great. These are sample elevations of townhome units. So, for sort of architectural diversity and product diversity, we stepped down the end of the building, just it doesn't look like a straight wall of something at the same elevation. And, again, different product type. And you can see everyone, folks have a front door and garage at the front, pull right into your house, and a lot of them have some decks on the top floors, on the second, sorry, the middle layer of living. Then these are just sort of what you just saw, this elevation. This is it in real life in Sudbury, on the top left. Some of our townhome buildings there. This is Cohasset, which Scott mentioned. This is also Cohasset, I believe, and then Marlborough in the top right. So, some townhome and direct-entry product. These are just representative images also of what we're hoping the amenity space could look like. This one is California, so we will not have palm trees, but we like this image because of this structure here, this covered structure, and that's sort of, trying to, New England, it's tough. We can't be outside all year round like California. So, just trying to activate the shoulder seasons and make sure that folks in the community can use that outdoor space as long as possible. This is East End, which was recently completed, fire pit, trailer structure over here. This is in Waltham in the top left, and Marlborough in the bottom left. And these are some images from Sudbury, which, if you're all up for it or interested, we'd be happy to take you over there. It's not too far a drive. Scott spoke to it earlier, but just the level of finish and what we're providing in the units. Quartz countertops, the side-by-side large washer-dryers. Can see in this image in the top right, it's a little hard, but here's your kitchen, and you walk right out, and there's your garage. So, everything accessible from the interior, closet systems, just providing a product that we think downsizer may be interested in. And it's just a lot easier to transition to this from a single-family home. And that's really it. Did I miss anything?
Good job. Thank you.
Did you have any more to add, or?
No, the only other thing I wanted to add is that in conjunction with the re-permitting of this or the permitting of this, our preference is to do a local initiative project. And in conjunction with the local initiative project, it would require an endorsement from this body, and then we would go to DHCD for approval subsequently to that. And concurrent with that, we would be proceeding through with the ZBA. So, there are many different options in terms of the permitting strategy here, but that would be our preference. So, it's one of the reasons, not the only reason, but one of the reasons why we're here this evening.
Thank you. And just to make clear for the board, we're not asking for that approval tonight. This is just sort of an initial introduction to the proposal, and we'll continue to have conversations, and we'll have you folks back again before we would do that. So, we just wanted to give people a kind of intro to that. So, Mr. Ryan, is there anything in terms of that that you wanted to add before?
No, thank you. Just if there's a timeline that you have for filing, so that we have a sense for our scheduling over the next few months?
Obviously, we want to just engage the community, make sure we talk to all the stakeholders and get input from everybody that is appropriate to get input from. But in terms of being ready to file an actual application, 60 days would probably be kind of the timeframe we have in mind. The plans, the preliminary plans at lease-grading and some of the engineering work has already been done. These are buildings that, you know, we have built before in other communities. They always get kind of updated for lessons that we've learned along the way. So, in terms of architectural plans and so forth, those are pretty well-developed as well. So, it's really just, you know, doing appropriate level of community outreach, making sure we collect all the comments, make the appropriate adjustments, and then prepare the plans and submit the full application. So, that's kind of the timeline we're on.
Great. Thank you. So, are there any initial comments from members of the Board of Selectmen? Knowing you'll get to see it again. The only thing I'd say...
Oh, really? Okay, thank you.
The only thing I'd say is we always ask folks to go before our design review board. So, one committee or board you might want to think about in this initial 60 days, so they have time to provide comments. And then the other thing is just, I'm sure you know, but in case you don't, that Insulet is planning to build a parking garage on that area that's right next to you, where there's currently a parking lot. So, just something to keep in mind, because these townhomes will be high as well, and the parking garage will be higher. So, just, you know, making sure when you're thinking about the buffer that you're providing in between your area, yeah, and that lower lot...
Gotcha.
And the lots, that there's, you know, enough of a barrier, so, you know, we don't have a lot of neighbors that are then concerned about car lights and things like that, because they do run on shifts, so they have people there.
There is a little bit of a grade change there as well, which I think will help us.
Right.
We've seen what's there today. I've kind of walked it personally, and they look like they've been a good neighbor, and we'll, you know, they've tried to preserve a little bit of a buffer there. Some of it's on our property. We'll preserve as much as we can. But, you know, our residents will deal with it.
Yes, yes.
They'll see it when they move in, and I think it'll be fine.
Yeah, so just, yeah, something to think about. And if you wanted to meet with them, I'm sure we could make the connection, just so you guys, if you had any questions for them about their future thing.
We're hoping a lot of them choose to live with us, actually.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, somebody mentioned that. That would be a great, and talk about living where you work. So, that could work out quite well. Okay.
Just out of curiosity, obviously, the market is for rental units. Where was there a loss of interest in condominiums?
Well, this was conceived in, the original idea to build for-sale product there, for-sale condominiums, was conceived in 2005, 2006. If you remember back to that time, that was a very bullish housing market.
Yeah.
You could build housing anywhere probably, and people would come and buy it. Then came 2007, 2008. So, that caused the initial delay. And I think from 2009, where we really started to engage, actually hired a marketing company, we went out to all the likely people who would like to build what we already had approvals for, and the feedback we got just was not, was not positive. So, I think, at the end of the day, it was kind of ill-conceived as a for-sale housing site. And, you know, it took us a while to come to that conclusion fully, because we wanted to wait and just see if the market would recover to the point where it was feasible. We think we're in another relatively hot housing market, and there's still really no viable interest in pursuing the for-sale product there.
Thank you.
Now, we, you know, it's been a decade. We've really fully vetted it, and we think that the highest and best use at this point is more apartment. We do want to stick to the target market, which that represented at the time, which was the 55 and older, kind of empty nester community. So, that's the way the apartments have designed, are designed. In fact, if you look at the original condominium site plan, it's very similar to this.
Peter?
Yeah, I just want to point out that one of our goals that we adopted tonight is to try to get closer to the 10% mandate from the state, since these are rental properties, even though only 25% of them are affordable under the 40B guidelines, all 86s would count toward Acton's 10%. So, that is something that matches our goal. I just have a question about these interior design. I, you talk about stairwells, and then you talk about flats for some of these apartments?
Yes.
And then, so, the people who live up above, they enter through the front door, and there's a stair that goes upstairs?
Correct.
Is that the way it works?
Correct. We call them direct entry, and that's in reference to the fact, everybody has their own front door. So, rather than go into a hallway, up a stair with your neighbors, and then into your apartment from the hallway, everybody has their own front door that comes right down to the ground.
Yeah.
So, and...
Yeah. I mean, I just usually think of a townhouse as three stories, you know? But these are staggered, kind of, or one on top of the other or whatever.
Kind of. There's a mix. So, we do have some traditional townhomes depicted on that particular plan there. These are three stories, you know, garage, den on the ground floor, your own front door. Second level is living level, and then bedroom level on the third floor. So, that one has an internal stairway as well. But some of these get a little bit more complicated, these particular designs here, because if you look at the front of the building, this would be a garage, and that garage might feed the apartment up here on the corner. So, there'd be an internal stairway off the garage, as well as an external front door. So, if you look at, drives the architects crazy, because it's this 3D maze, you know, to make it all work and get from A to B. But people love it, because big garage, and the way these things are built, you know, you pull a 900-square-foot apartment out and put a garage in there, and you've got not only a garage, but you've got extra storage space, and, which people love, especially people moving out of a home. So, it's a great product, I think, for the target market we're going after.
Yeah. Just being on the upper end of your demographic, having got there.
Myself, indeed.
It's amazing how quickly you slow down going upstairs. It just gets harder, so.
You should get the, I recently learned that the MIT H Lab has a suit that they have that simu, you can put it on, and it simulates what it feels like and what people see like if you're in your mid-'70s. Somebody used it for people designing things to understand the, you know, impacts, because those of us in your millennial market aren't faced with some of the same physical restrictions when you get that older. But anyways, thank you.
My pleasure.
So, I will ask you subsides, see if we have any comments from the audience or questions.
So, projects, West Acton. I have some questions and then some comments.
So, questions, go to us.
Yes. So, how many bedrooms are these?
They're a mix of one, two, and three.
One, two, and three. And how many square foot on average?
I'll ask them to, I think it's a mix as well.
There's a very broad mix. So, probably the smallest one-bedroom apartment we have would be 850 square feet, and above that would be one of the smaller flat apartments. And they would, the one-bedrooms would probably go up to about 1,350 square feet. Two-bedrooms would start at about 1,250, 1,300 square feet and go up to 1,750 square feet.
How, and are you proposing to use not-so-natural gas, or are you using electricity or heat pumps?
We use electric gas, heat and hydraulic heating systems, and electric-fired cooling, well, not electric-fired, but electric cooling system, so there'd be a compressor there. The best, the thing we do that really helps keep the energy consumption down, everybody pays their own utility bills, so there's separate meters in every apartment, which I think is the best conservation program you could have.
My last question, but I do have comments, is what level of income is, are the affordable units?
Eighty percent of the AMI.
Eighty percent. And then, how many of the units are accessible?
Um, five. Sorry. So, everything, everything that is a flat on the ground floor will be adaptable, and 5% will be accessible, I think it's six apartments. They'll be fully built out with lowered, appropriate appliances, lowered countertops and so forth.
Thank you. I want to just say I like the Cohasset design better, not that I would want any of this, because I feel like we have enough buildings. But I feel like we should press for a lower median, like 30% median, to address the people that really need the help, especially the accessible units. Also, I've gotten a lot of comments from people regarding the lack of accessible transportation from the Avalon space, so if you could do something about a shuttle, regular shuttles contribute to the overall community shuttle situation. And I do want to call attention to seven acres of trees that would be gone. It's a pretty dense forest up there from what I can tell, and hope that you contribute to the tree fund, as well as put in a trail to connect to our other green spaces. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Ryan. I just have a quick...
I just have a quick question in that these, I think it was, it was clear to me.
Did you just say your name again? Sorry. And then I always ask questions to be addressed to the board.
Sorry. That these are in fact rental, these are rental units. So I see these not targeted toward fifty-five plus. And I don't know that you can even, you're not planning on putting a restriction. I don't think you can put a restriction on rentals. I see these as targeted to single family homes. But I am excited that it'll get us to a safe harbor.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Franny Osmond, Half Moon Hill. I am, actually, I want to thank you for thinking about sidewalks. And I like that design, especially when it can go around. I think it's really important to have roots. I hope that the driveways somehow are minimized so that they're not the main entry to people. You know, oftentimes it's hard to get to someone's front door. So anyway, I want to thank you for that. And I'm happy, I'm always happy with more housing, especially rental housing, available. The transportation mitigation, other communities, like I know Sudbury and Maynard and Lexington has done this for a long time, is get transportation mitigation money. And I don't know what we've gotten up to in doing that, but I think it's important that we get one-time mitigation and annual contributions and that we require, or not require, but we somehow invite Avalon to join Crosstown Connect as a member. Just this week, I was at a Crosstown Connect meeting and somebody was saying, why isn't Avalon a member yet? So it would be really useful if you joined our Transportation Management Association, especially because we have the fixed route bus going to Avalon every hour and the rail shuttle. I had the same questions about accessible units. You said six apartments are fully accessible, but then there are more that are adaptable. How many?
Everything by law, everything that is at ground level.
Yes. And how many is that that are at ground level? So there are twenty-six at ground level plus, or the six are within that. So twenty could be adaptable and six out of eighty-two.
If someone shows up and needs a special accommodation, you can.
Okay, great. I would encourage you to look at your common space and even consider an indoor common space. I live in a cohousing neighborhood and it's very nice to have shared indoor space. And I know you have it probably at the other part. Anything that can promote community among the people. And finally, I wanted to second the question about energy. This is a possibility that you have, especially considering the goals of the town, to possibly pilot a non-gas neighborhood. If you have heat exchangers and induction stoves, you, sounded like the only thing, you said something about electric gas? What did you mean by that?
Air conditioning is electric.
Yeah.
It's the traditional, we have a, we call it a dual loop.
Oh, do you want to speak?
Yes, sorry, we're being recorded on TV.
It's a dual loop heat exchanger system where we have gas-fired hot water that runs through a heat exchanger in the winter and a second loop that runs through a compressor in the summer and that provides the air conditioning. So that's, one's electric and the other is gas.
I wanted to encourage you to possibly go out on a limb and demonstrate a gas-free neighborhood. I'm especially educated because I have a friend who is working with mothers out front in Acton. And so I've recently been very much educated that that's possible. So I want to encourage you. And solar, is there any solar aspects?
We haven't proposed any at this juncture, but that's one thing that came up in one of our prior meetings that we are looking into.
It would be really well received in our town if you did consider trying to explore that. I mean, all of that.
Thank you, Franny. Yes.
Angie So, Rambowei, just thought about because I live in North Acton, with the added unit, with the North Acton Fire Station, were the added unit considered adding more resources to our North Acton? That's just a general question. Thank you.
I mean, that, you know, we are moving forward with designing a North Acton Fire Station and it's for the growing population of North Acton, which this would certainly contribute to, yes. That's your question.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up.
Yes.
That we're talking about, you know, an additional twenty-four thousand gallons a day of water for this and whatever road capacity, I think it's drawing attention to the need for cumulative planning so we understand at build-out what our resources would be needed for infrastructure and water and then account for each project to see how much that takes off of what we have left. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I will add my echo, the comments about trying to avoid use of gas. I mean, you saw this past week what natural gas does. And it's not only dangerous environmentally, it's dangerous, you know, to lives. There was lives lost due to natural gas. So if there are options you can think about to reduce or not use natural gas, I would highly encourage you, consider it. It's something that, you know, is a goal of this town and that we've been working on. So I think it's something worthwhile to look into. Induction stoves are a really great alternative for folks and air source heat pumps. And when you're talking about these smaller units, they're perfect for that kind of thing. So it's definitely something worthwhile to look into. And if you want any more information on it, we can definitely hook you up with people in town. And then we will sell them all on the Acton power choice so that they can green their energy a hundred percent. So, but that would be individual choices for each resident. But thank you for coming. Seeing no other comments from the public or members of the board, we'll just thank you. And I know you'll be in touch with town staff and others and we will see you back in a few weeks or months. So thank you very much.
Appreciate the time, thank you.
For coming and staying so late tonight.
Oh, it's okay, hopefully.
Okay. Item seven, discuss the pedestrian safety meeting. Mr. Manager, do you want to talk about this? Do you want me to do a little?
Sure, I'll start. Thank you. We, we've been getting a lot of feedback from the public regarding concerns with our crosswalks and other ways that pedestrians are using our road network. And so we're, I know, I'm meeting with the police chief and a few other folks and our public works director with a few residents later this week to discuss specific concerns. I think the purpose of this item on the agenda was to see if there's any additional outreach that you'd like me to facilitate on this matter.
Yeah, so we talked about, you know, the town manager has nicely put together a meeting with, as he mentioned, some folks and including the police chief and public works director to talk with them specifically. This is in large part due to the unfortunate accident on Hayward Street. And there's been a lot of interest from the public in, you know, how we add sidewalks or attend to sidewalks or other pedestrian safety issues in town. And so we wanted to talk about whether we want to hold some other sort of forum. And Peter, as the sidewalk committee lays on, didn't know if there was, you know, if we want to bring the sidewalk committee into this somehow or coordinate something with them to do a public forum, just to get feedback from folks or to educate them more on the sidewalk process and, you know, perhaps hear more from people who seem now energized and interested in this issue and trying to help direct that energy and interest in a positive manner.
Sure. We actually had a conversation with the Beacon reporter, Matt, who's here, about doing an article on sidewalks to get information out. We should probably update you since this tragic accident. We had a meeting of the sidewalk committee last week. It wasn't clear. We don't know the reason why this accident happened yet. We did get an email asking for sidewalks on Jefferson Road, I guess it is, but unclear whether the lack of sidewalks had anything to do with this accident. I think the concern of the sidewalk committee is the slow pace at which sidewalks get built in town. I think according, we just, we asked for a accounting of the sidewalk committee fund, which has a hundred and fifty-one grand in it now. Eleven thousand dollars was spent last year out of that fund. I know the engineering department has a fund to build sidewalks. It was my understanding that was mostly for maintenance of existing sidewalks. I'm now understanding they use some of that money to actually build new sidewalks. I think this year there may have been some work on High Street on building a sidewalk. They did an enormous spectacular retaining wall on High Street going toward Parker to prepare for the sidewalk to be built from Parker down to Valley Road, extended down to Valley Road. But I don't know when that's going to get built. There are, there are lots of problems with building sidewalks and, you know, we can go into those, but it's not necessary to do that now. But what the sidewalk committee would suggest is that the town manager, and I've asked Cory about this, look into the reasons why sidewalks take so long to build. It's my understanding that some of them get contracted to outside contractors. Others, they use the town highway department personnel who have other duties paving roads and whatnot. It may be putting more money in the budget to, you know, hire more personnel might help alleviate the problem and move along the issue of building sidewalks. But somehow the town has to start, you know, accelerating the pace at which we build sidewalks. I mean, there's a lot of dangerous roads in town. It's an old town. And I think sidewalks, again, and not just for safety of people, public health reasons and, you know, generally getting around the town safely. So that's what the sidewalk committee's recommendation would be, that the town figure out what the main problem is and why they're not being built quick enough and try to, if it takes more money or whatever, address the issue to see if we can resolve it.
Great, thanks, Peter. Janet?
Peter, I was wondering if there's any obstacle in the fact that there are people who don't want sidewalks going in front of their property. I don't know, there's negotiations. There's this exhaustive procedure where, you know, you have to negotiate with the property owners and all that and figure out where the placement of the sidewalk is going to be. And, you know, we've seen sidewalks where, you know, it's all on one side and then it goes over to the other side. And I figure, okay, it was either not physically feasible to put the sidewalk continuously or the property owner didn't want the sidewalk there. But I don't know if that sometimes plays into the delays.
Absolutely. I mean, the town, on the old roads, obviously the town has no easement and they have to go out and negotiate with every property owner. I mean, this huge retaining wall, you can imagine what the property owner was thinking about, what's going to happen to my front yard. But that, that's a big issue. And I don't know how much of a logjam that is. I think Cory and, who's the engineer?
Paul.
Paul, Paul Campbell, do that themselves, go out and negotiate with people, maybe. And then it has to go to the legal, you know, council's office to get into legal form. Maybe another person, and it's always tough to add staff, but it's always a matter of priorities. Another person to just focus on that would be an issue. I don't think the surveys are all that much of an issue. We have the capability of doing that. I think Paul does that. So it's negotiating easements. There are tons of issues. Very dangerous stretch on Great Road from Davis up to Main Street. It's a state road. The state wants to rebuild the bridge over, you know, Fort Brook Pond or Fort Pond Brook, I guess it is. Or no, Neshoba Brook over there. I'm sorry, I'm thinking of River Street, but Neshoba Brook. But now that the rail trail comes through, there's an entrance right off of two A. So there's more people walking there. So the state has asked, the town is holding off until the state comes up with a design for new plans and they don't want to build a sidewalk and then have to tear it up when they rebuild the bridge. But there got to be solutions to those issues. And, you know, on Taylor Road, it was the same way. One of the, one of the butters wanted to swap land with the schools, which I think we got permission to do at town meeting, last town meeting, but it hasn't happened yet. So I don't know why, you know. Is it, is it a personnel issue, a lack of resources, whatever.
Peter, do you think the sidewalk committee would be interested in holding a public forum, perhaps in conjunction with the Board of Suckman? And I'm thinking it could be after we've gathered some information about what some of those barriers are. And also, I know Cory, you know, can talk about some of the other, when he's applied to Mass Works funding that you can then use for pedestrian safety, like the flashing lights that we've put up at some crosswalks. You know, there's been requests to maybe put those up in other areas of town. And, you know, I'm thinking also education about what the process is. I think a lot of people don't understand how sidewalks get built in town, where the money comes from, how the decisions are made about prioritizing sidewalks and things like that. Do you think the sidewalk committee might be interested? We could have a panel with maybe a member of the board sidewalk committee.
Sure, I'd be happy to be involved in that. I, right now, there are only three members of the sidewalk committee. It's a five-member board. They went down from seven because they couldn't get quorums. So they need a couple of members. So any, anyone who's interested in working on, you know, building sidewalks in town, the committee has, they evaluate all the streets in town. The reason the committee was put together was ten years ago, the squeaky wheel, you know, the neighborhood that complained the most got sidewalks. And now the sidewalk committee has formalized the process. They've evaluated all the roads in town. They have criteria for deciding which are the top priorities. They've got a whole list of priorities. But their list then gets turned over to the town's engineering department to actually build the sidewalks. And they have to work through all the easement and survey and, you know, issues about actually getting the work done. So, yeah, I'd certainly be happy to work with the committee. I'm sure they would be interested in helping out doing forums on sidewalks.
Perhaps you and I and John could talk about that going forward. Are there any other comments from members of the board or comments or questions from the public about this issue? Yes, Angie?
Angie So, Rambowei. So first of all, thank you for putting this on the agenda. It's, I'm actually coming here to relay a message from the injured student. It is his sincere wish. He doesn't want to see this happen to anybody else in the future. And as a parent and a school community member, it's really heartbreaking to see this happen this year again. And there was an incident last year. So other than the sidewalk, and I was asking the board to consider some other option because both accidents happened on Hayward Road. And I know there are traffic light discussion discussed before. And with the traffic increasing Acton and as well as we have the one-tier bus system now, there's definitely more traffic into that little area there, right there. So there, you know, please take into consideration of the traffic, traffic light as well as speed bump in the area that around the school because those are the area that most students walk around and, you know, they're, not just sidewalk, is they're crossing the street and they need some kind of protection with the increased traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
Sarah projects West Acton. I'm also glad, thank you for establishing this. So we have a focal point for pedestrian safety. The, there's a shift in sort of progressive planning departments and agencies for people to be first as opposed to cars first, car-friendly design. And recently, it's my understanding that the design that we, town of Acton submitted for Route Two Way between Davis and Main Street had no buffer for the pedestrians. And the state actually came back and disapproved the design and asked for a buffer, more pedestrian-friendly. So the state's in support of this. I think that we should be doing that first as opposed to being told by the state. Either way, I'm glad that it happened. That also provides a room for a bike lane in the future. I think that we have the right to create these safety zones on the numbered highways and reduce the speed limits. And I think we should do that. I certainly, I'm in favor of raised crosswalks. I'm less in favor of lights. But these other towns are making the speed limits twenty-five miles an hour, certainly thirty at the highest. And so I hope that we proceed to using our rights to do that under state law. I appreciate the retaining wall. It's a masterful work of art, frankly. I didn't think it was going to be possible to make that both beautiful and functional. And so I appreciate what Cory's done there. And the whole sidewalk committee, this was actually, you know, people of privilege before would be the squeaky wheels and get the sidewalks built. And it's a much fairer process now with a formula that is managed by the public. And I really appreciate that. And so just another plug for cumulative planning because we only have so much capacity and a lot of the side roads are becoming cut-throughs. and a lot of the side roads are becoming cut-throughs because of the development pressure, the number of units every year. That if we become conscious of how much of the road capacity that we're approving with each of these permits, I think we'll be better off. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the public? John?
Just, John, are you having a, a meeting later this week with your police chief and your fire chief and, and when is that?
Thursday morning.
So he's meeting with a small group of people, just privately. And then we're going to have, that's why we're talking about having a larger public forum.
Okay.
Yep. Yes.
I have one more comment. It was relative to the sidewalk fees because I see often that we discount the sidewalk fees for developments. And I feel like that right now what we're doing is we're saying that a certain number of feet of frontage will equal this amount of sidewalk fee relative to the cost of putting in a sidewalk. But I think that under state law, we can also have a program where we actually have a specific number of sidewalks planned for a specific period of time to make up for all the time that we didn't have sidewalk fees and charge or include a portion of those, that program in with the sidewalk fee so we can increase the amount that we're getting from each project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we are looking at redeveloping the sidewalk fund policy. We're developing a policy. We have an official policy. Okay, seeing no other discussion on that, I will move to our consent agenda. I will read through these items. Please say hold if you'd like me to hold an item. Number eight, board to accept Chapter 180, Section 17A. Number nine, accept gift Acton Police Department, a gift totaling $5,000 from the Digital Federal Credit Union to provide programs that make a difference in the community. Number 10, a conservation restriction for 161 Newtown Road. Number 11, sewer betterment unit 5 Adams Street. Number 12, right-of-way street cut permits. Number 13, one-day alcoholic beverage license, MIT Lincoln Laboratory near Park, September 20th, 2018. Number 14, one-day alcoholic beverage license, True West Brewing, Garden Hill Field, September 29th, 2018, over a rain date of October 6th, 2018. Number 15, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Neshoba Valley Neighbors Club, Nagog Woods Clubhouse, October 27th, 2018. Number 16, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Allison Hawes, Narrow Park, September 22nd, 2018. Number 17, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Iron Works Farm, Jones Tavern, October 6th, 2018. Number 18, request for waiver fees, Iron Works Farm. Number 19, request for refund, Planning Department. Number 20, board to dissolve the town manager's search committee. Number 21, request for use of Town Common, Acton Fire Department, October 13th, 2018. Number 22, request for street usage on earmarks, race management.
Oh.
Okay. Number 23, committee appointment, Dean Charter, Associate Member, Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, term to expire at completion of task. Number 24, committee appointment, Fred Kinchfield, member, Acton Dog Park Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2019. Number 25, meeting minutes, April 23rd, July 30th, goal-setting meeting, and August 6th, 2018. Number 26, request disposal of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Number 27, accept gift Recreation Department, a gift totaling $100 from Kevin and Carmen Logue for a, for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. Janet, you held number 22?
I just got an email from somebody who lives in Indian Village who said that there was, in, I think it's the third race. They had three different races or so. But anyhow, there was an extraneous reference to Onida Road that he said that it's not even near the road before where these people are going to be running. So somebody at some point needs to make sure that they don't cause, if these people are relying on the map to run that, you know, if they're not from the, the area, they may not know that we're looking for a road that isn't there at the end of the other road. So just a comment, I mean, we, it's not in our control. It's up to the people running the race, so.
Hopefully they'll figure that out. Just a bunch of people running around town. No, there will be officers, I believe, posted as well, so they should be okay. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept consent agenda items eight through 27?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and as a reminder, our next meeting is October 1st. So thank you, everybody.